Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Thomason. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And city attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening. Good evening. And welcome to the December 5th, 2017 council meeting. The mayor's not here tonight, so I will be in charge of the agenda for the evening. And I am Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem. And I don't see Reverend Plakes. Oh, okay. If Reverend Plakes, if you will, come up, please. I was so busy looking, I didn't see you.
Mayor Pro Tem. And also to Mr. City Manager. To our city attorney. And to the city councilors who were present tonight. Let me just say I thank you for the opportunity to come and to offer invocation tonight. Thank you so very much. Let us pray. Dear God, we welcome you in this place. We welcome you in these chambers. We welcome your peace. We welcome your patience. We welcome your Holy Spirit. We pray for these leaders who lead our city government. We pray for your protection upon them and their families. Pray for the continued leadership of our mayor. We pray for your continued leadership in the decisions that these councilors have to take in consideration. We pray, oh heavenly Father, that you will guide them with integrity. You will guide them with the due diligence to look at decisions that will be in the best interest of all citizens of this great city. We pray, oh heavenly Father, that you will continue to bring unity in this city. We pray that we will all have the same desire. Have the same love for this city. Protect us from the evil one. Protect us from divisiveness. Protect us from all sorts of attacks. Allow this city to be seen throughout this country, throughout this state as a place where people will want to come and desire to raise their family, their children. Now, Lord, we ask that you will continue to engulf this council in your love. Continue to surround them with your grace. Continue to protect them with your almighty power. It's in your precious and glorious name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Merry Christmas to you all.
And same to you and tell your congregation, thank you very much for loaning you to us a low out today. And it's good to see you.
Thank you very much. We see you all too.
Also this afternoon, we will have a pledge given by I'm gonna find it in a minute. Restro during the calendar. And if you all will come forth, we will all stand with him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you will give us your name and your age.
I am Brayden Willis and I am 10 years old.
I am Lilia Berry and I am also 10 years old.
I am Shacey Salazar, I am 11 years old.
I'm John Dan Reese and I'm also 10 years old.
My name is Victoria Saxon and I am 11 years old.
My name is Delian Dixon and I'm 10 years old.
And I know you have some teachers. The principal, I think, is here. If you'd like to stand up and give us your name, too.
I had a woman. I, um
Let's give them another hand. And if you'll come around and show us your Oh, we have some parents. If parents, if you will, please stand. We still want to shake their hand. Next, we have a proclamation. Mr. Jerome Biggers. Is he here? Okay. Next, we have a resolution expressing condolences for Mr. Terry A. Fuller and his family is here. And Counselor Thomas is going to read that. We're gonna read it. Uh huh. The family is here. If Mr. Fuller's family would please come forward. And if I seen this joint, I probably am.
It's an honor to read this resolution into the record. Whereas Mr. Terry A. Fuller, former waste equipment operator employed with the Public Works Department, passed away on November 20th, 2017. Whereas Mr. Fuller was employed with the city from November 19th, 2012 to November 19th, 2017. Now therefore, the council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves. We hereby convey to the family of Mr. Terry A. Fuller, our sincere condolences and deepest sympathy. Mr. Fuller was an outstanding employee with the Public Works Department, and he will be missed by all who knew him. Mayor Pro Tem, I move adoption of the resolution.
Second. Yes, and proper motion, second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposes. Thank you. Would you all like to say something?
My father loved his job. Loved working for the city, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. If you'll come around so we can shake your hand also. I would also like to express condolences to the family of Frank Etheridge. His memorial service was held yesterday. And as you know, Frank was a longtime citizen of Columbus, Georgia, and he was retired president from SunTrust Bank. And he actually hired at SunTrust Bank. So he would be truly missed in this community. Did the Biggers' family come in? Before we have the tax assessors update. Do I turn it over to the city manager or the
Well, I'm on publicly announce. It's been in the ledger today, but this is a public announcement that the TAD hearing for Midland is going to be delayed. The public hearing will be January 23rd. And then there'll be a 45-day period after that date in which the council must vote. But we will re-advertise that. Planning Division will put a new notice in the paper of the public hearing, but it should be set for January 23rd, and I believe that's a 5:30 meeting. Appreciate Mr. Wright, and one of the applicants is here tonight, but we're not going to have a hearing tonight. It'll be delayed till January 23rd. All right. Thank you, sir.
Now we will have the update from the Tax Assessors Office.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, ladies and gentlemen of council, city manager, city attorney. My name is John Williams. I'm the deputy chief appraiser. I'm here to give you another appeals update. As of this morning at 9 o'clock, we had 4,790 active appeals in our system. That's 6.9% of the total taxable parcels in the county. Represents 1.4% of the value in dispute, and we've gone over that a number of times. Of the 4,790 active appeals, they, of course, have all been reviewed. 1,995 of those have been recommended for a reduction. That's 42% of those active appeals. Last time, last several times, we talked about these 30-day letters or change notices. We've issued 8,789 change notices, which is a letter of reduction from the notice value they got on their first notice of assessment. Represents basically a negotiated reduction in their value. So 8,789 have been sent out, and 7,123 of those, or 81% of those, have been expired, meaning that 30-day time period has elapsed. We have 1,818 no-change recommendations. That's roughly 38% of the active appeals that we have in the system today. Certified to the BOE, we have certified 971 of the hearings or the cases to the BOE for their hearing. And as I've said before, the appeal administrator is the one who schedules those hearings so that the appeal administrator actually reaches out to the taxpayer by letter after we certify. This is our second week of BOE hearings. We began, if you recall, last Monday of last week. And we still anticipate those BOE hearings lasting through the beginning of April 2018. For the week, last week and this week, we've had or have 225 commercial hearings. So that's a combined. We still have some to go Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. But currently, of the ones that we've seen, 25% of those have been no-shows. The taxpayer or their agent has decided not to come to the hearing. 10 of those have been rescheduled. Four of those have been withdrawn. Six of those have actually been reduced, which means the taxpayer brought information to the BOE, the Board of Equalization. They heard their case, and they felt like there needed to be a reduction in the value from our value. So six of those, or 2.7 of those, have been reduced. 15 of those have been upheld. Our value has been upheld. And then 47 of those have been, we've negotiated a settlement prior to the BOE. So they were scheduled for a BOE, but as I've briefed you in the past, we continue to try to negotiate. If there's room for negotiation, we try to negotiate a reduced value, and that's what that 47 number represents. We have, as of 9 o'clock this morning, there were 87 more BOE hearings to be held this week. And then the next two weeks, beginning the 11th and the 18th of December, we have a total of 300 residential BOEs to be heard. So that concludes my appeals update. I will take your questions.
Are there any questions? We have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Williams, the BOE hearing numbers, from your experience in the past, are these percentages about the same percentages of no-shows of people that are withdrawn or
That they
Do you have any feeling for that?
I do. I do. And last week, if you recall, I briefed you, there were approximately 90% no-shows last week. Of course, that number's changed dramatically, but still, one of every four don't show up. That's a bigger no-show percentage than we're used to seeing. I don't know what that says. I can draw some assumptions, but I don't typically do that. But it is higher. The number of no-shows is higher.
And the others on here, do we always have withdrawals and reductions and negotiated settlements and those kinds of things?
Yes, we do.
And are these figures about the same percentage-wise that we would typically see?
I believe that you see a higher percentage, both in the no-shows, as I just mentioned, and in the amount of negotiated settlements that we have. And that may be reflective of just the number of appeals that we have.
Right. Okay. I was just curious as to how that compared percentage-wise to years before. I know that our total number has been quite a bit more.
Yes, and I've heard from my commercial manager last week and again this week, she's never seen so many no-shows. So that was really her only
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I see no more questions.
Okay.
And since we're talking about the Tax Assessors Office, if we can call on the city manager's agenda, number
Item C.
Item C, under purchases.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At the last business meeting, we had an inconclusive vote on the additional services addendum for Tyler Technologies. And so that is back on the purchase agenda today. And we have Mr. John Williams here from the Tax Assessors Office, and I see that he has the chair of the Board of Tax Assessors present and the attorney for the Board of Tax Assessors present.
Counselor Garrett.
Mr. Williams, I have just a couple of questions that'll be relevant to this. How many employees total, and I'll kind of drill it down a little bit later, but how many employees are there in the Tax Assessors Office right now?
23.
23. How many are actual appraisers?
Got six and three. So that's nine, and then we have two more staff members that are designated as mapper appraisers. Their primary function is to work the maps.
Okay. And as far as what y'all would be having Tyler do, how many, I understand it's kind of data collection type stuff?
I'm sorry?
I understand it's kind of a data collection type task.
Yeah.
Is it just the 11 employees that would be qualified for that, or would all 23 be potentially qualified?
No, it's just the appraisers that would be qualified.
Just the appraisers?
Yes.
And Madam Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, he does have a presentation that he'd like to make on this matter, too.
Okay.
I can wait for my questions, though.
And so basically, what I'm requesting approval on tonight, and Mr. John Williams will share with you why this is critical, why it's necessary, but we're asking for an addendum to the Tyler Technology Agreement for $104,400 for, at $29 a parcel, for 3,600 parcels to provide residential field inspection services and appeal reviews. And so with that, Mr. Williams, would you share with us why you're here?
Yes, sir. And I apologize for not being present. The last time this was discussed and brought up for a vote, I think I really could have helped with some of the confusion, and I'll go ahead and take a personal hit. You know, communication is two-way. And if there's a failure to communicate, and I'm part of that communication, I'll go ahead and take the hit on that because I haven't done my job. I have not communicated to you as a body how urgent this is. And I've said in several briefings that if we don't get this done, and I believe this is the only manner to do it, that it will preclude us from completing the jobs necessary to get our digest submitted to the tax commissioner on time. So I said that in as many different ways as I felt like I could a couple of weeks ago when I presented the information, but listening to the meeting from home, I had a sick family, so I apologize. A couple of things I felt like we needed to clarify, or I felt like I could help clarify for you. The way that that addendum is written is they're trying to do two things with the one addendum, and it's just a legality thing that they had, day Tyler had to do. Two different things I want to clarify. The additional BOE support was that 20 additional person days that you had some questions about, Mr. Allen, Counselor Allen. And I think that that really got blended in with the 3,600 parcels and the $104,400 request. They're separate. They're in the same addendum to the contract because Tyler needs to put the fact that they're giving us 20 additional workdays, it's got to be in somewhere. It's got to be in a contract somewhere so we can hold them to it. So they put that in this addendum as well. But the $104,400 does not buy 20 additional workdays. That's a separate gift, if you will, and that's the way I look at it. They've given us this time for Steve Wise, project manager, to stay here and provide basically another month of additional BOE support to our staff. That's a $16,000 gimme. And I say that because his per diem rate is $800 a day, and that's in the Tyler contract. If we were to buy 20 days, that's $16,000. That's at no cost to the city. That's not part of the $104,400. It's just in the addendum. So let's try to separate that, if you will. And I can answer any questions to that, but basically, those first four points under additional BOE support is what I just talked about. Now, the addendum, the 104,400, that is to purchase manpower to come in here and collect data in the field for our sales and our permits. I throw in transfers. So this is work that we have not been able to do because of the 15% of appeals that we've encountered through this process. We're not asking Tyler to come in here and help us with the appeals by paying them more money. We're not saying, you know what? You had this contract, some believe you've satisfied it, others are questionable about that. Let's just give you more money and come in and finish the contract. That's not what they're doing. They're providing manpower to come in here to our county and collect the data necessary for the transfer, successful transfer of permits and sales. So we have to do that every year. And instead of doing it what we would normally do the last three months of the year, we've had to postpone that. So since August, we've not accounted for or done the paperwork for any sales in our office or any permits in our office. So we anticipate that number being about 3,600, 3,600. So when you multiply that rate of 29 times that, it gets 104,400. That's where the numbers come from. There was some question about them not giving enough on the negotiation. And again, I'll take the hit on that. I failed to communicate where we started from. I came and briefed you several weeks ago that they were at 30 and they went to 29. And that's, I know that from some of Counselor Garrett's questions, that's really what everybody thought. That's where they started and that's where they ended. That's not the complete story, and I'll get that to the next slide. They went from $40 to 29. Again, I'll cover that in a second. That $11 swing is a $39,600 savings. When you add that to the $16,000, that's $55,600 in savings that we're getting from what we're proposing be done with this amendment. How do I get the numbers? So I briefed, they went from 30 to 29. What I failed to communicate to you was that $30 was a $10 reduction off their standard $40 per parcel fee. So we had already, through our relationship with Tyler, got to a 25% discount on their typical data collection fee per parcel. Then you asked us to go back and ask for more, and we did. They gave us another dollar. Now, from 30 to 29 doesn't seem like much, but from 40 to 29, that's 27 and 1/2% discount. I know my wife would go to the store and get that all day. I probably would, too. It's a discount that is significant. When you look at a dollar movement, not so much. $11 on 40, yeah, that's a significant discount. Look at what the typical cost would be in another county, and these are from an Atlanta county for a 2017 contract that Tyler wrote with them. Tyler has been involved with this county for 20 years. I know a lot of you are all in business. If you've been dealing with a client for 20 years, would you give them a standard rate or would you give them a pretty good rate? I think they give them a pretty good rate. So this represents their rate. You'll hear me say a blended rate. So I blend 81, 38, and $35 to make 40. That is their standard rate that they started from and reduced it to 29 for us. The reason why they know they're charging that county $81 for new construction is they've been in that county for 20 years. They can press a button and tell themselves, how many new construction do we have right now? So when they're quoting this addendum for them, they press a button and say, all right, we've got 3,000 or 2,500 new construction. We have 500 permits. We have 300 transfers. We know exactly how. So they can quote them specifically how much a new construction will be and how much a permit will be and how much a sales review will be. We don't know exactly, when we ask them to do this, how many new construction, how much new construction we have, what number that would be, or what number the permits would be, or what number the sales review would be. Now, as we get closer to the end of December, we'll know. But we didn't know when we asked them to negotiate this rate. So they gave us a blended rate, and that's why you see the difference. But if you look at what it cost us at 104,400 and you use their standard rate of $40 a parcel times 36, that's 144,000. We're saving, that's where my last slide said, we're saving 39,600. It's a 27 and 1/2% savings off their standard rate. That is why I wanted to come back and talk to you all and let you know, it's not just a dollar movement off the rate. They negotiated this fee because they do want to maintain the relationship. They've thrown in an additional month for Steve, the project manager, to be here to support our BOEs because they do want to maintain the relationship. They understand that we've got a lot of work to do. And there is no way that my staff can do that work and get the information to the tax commissioner and the digest on time so that she can then push out her bills later in the year. The same kind of mess that we got into now will happen again if we don't have augmentation of our staff to deal with the permits and the sales and the reviews. And that's why I'm asking for this to be approved tonight. The other thing that we're concerned with is they're going to have anywhere from two to four, I'm not sure, it just depends on the flow, personnel here first week in January. Well, they're trained and ready to go, but they're in different parts of the country. So they have to arrange for their TDY, their per diem, get reservations, get them a place to sleep, get them set up. We're very concerned that if we continue to delay, that that's all just going to get pushed back. that if we continue to delay, that that's all just going to get pushed back. We won't have, be able to have them here at the beginning of January. It'll just, as long as we delay or not approve it, if we don't approve it, if we don't approve it, we just won't get the work done. But I'm very concerned that if we don't vote on this tonight, it may jeopardize being able to get them in here in a timely fashion and getting that project completed by the end of March, which is what we need to do, and that's what the contract calls for. Do you have any questions to me whatsoever?
Counselor Garrett, did you? That's one question.
I do. The 3,600 number that was given to us, where did that come from?
It came from looking, John Hutchinson and I worked together with permits, basically first looked at it in August. And we anticipated, we, several slides, several presentations ago, I gave you the numbers on where we were last year at this time and where our totals were last year, and then where we were as of August, and then what we anticipated it being at the end of the year. So that was an educated guess based on John's department and my department.
And I understand that's permits and new construction, sales review. What happens if those are not complete? Do we have to complete those to get the digest?
We have to complete those.
Okay.
Yeah. And we do, there was a question last week about, why didn't Tyler do that? Tyler's field gathering ended with the date of assessment, 1-1-17. So they did all their preliminary work for the 1-1-17 assessments in '16. So their field gathering requirement in the contract ended as of 1-1-17. So we're talking about 2017 permits and transfers for texture 2018. So it's never been a Tyler requirement in the contract for them to do permits and reviews for '17 sales.
Okay. And what do you, and I know this would be a guess because every home's different, but what would you guess it takes? Because I understand it's 40 houses a day, basically. If you break it down over three months to get to 3,600, what do you think it takes the time, what kind of time does it take per house typically to do the measurements?
You know, it really depends. And one of the reasons why that new construction is so high, you know, it depends on the size of the house. If I'm, what we call strapping a house, measuring a house and taking notes on everything about it, you know, I can do that in 30 minutes, or it may take me an hour and a half. Depends on how many floors there are in the house. And it, these are experienced field data people. So I know from talking to Steve, he's run projects like this before, not to confuse the two, because he's doing BOE support, we're not talking about him managing this. But he said that that's very doable for an experienced staff. We rarely see those numbers because we've got so much going on. We can't put appraisers in the field for weeks at a time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I wanted to go back to the, I would like to follow up on the 3,600 number. But I'd like to go back to the $16,000 savings. If I understand your math right, Tyler is giving us, Mr. Wise, for 20 days, and you multiplied his value for 20 days, and that's how you came up?
The per diem rate in the original Tyler contract.
Okay. If, in my understanding of this scenario where we are now, everybody's kind of chipping in and everybody's got skin in the game, so to speak.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, we're in a situation where the city has been behind the eight ball. We're down several million dollars. This whole situation's cost us a lot of money. And so what we asked last week was Tyler needs to have more skin in the game because part of this is their fault. I think you share some of the burden. The board shares some of the burden. The thing you talked about earlier, the communication problem, that's all this just piled on, and we are where we are. For Tyler to then offer to give Steve for two more weeks, four more weeks, and then you to turn around and count that as a savings, to me is questionable.
Okay.
I just don't, I don't think we need to be counting that as a savings.
You strike that. That's fine.
Well, I just wanted to make that point clear. And to me, it's not a savings. If that's what they're donating as a part of this, to make everybody whole and feel better, then I don't think we need to be sliding it over, counting it.
And the reason I counted it as a savings, if we had to pay for his additional support, that's what it would cost.
I understand. I understand that. But this is their donation.
Yes.
So that's their donation that goes in the equation of what we're all trying to do here to make, resolve the issues we have.
Right.
Now, to go back to the 3,600 number, all of those are not new construction. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. What, how, what are the percentages of those? How's it break down?
You know, averaged about three, and again, because they're estimates, it's hard to give you an exact number. But in years past, about 300 new construction, sales is what we've been seeing. So that would be as reasonable, you know, estimate as any. So that's...
So you said new sales?
New construction.
Okay.
Right. I think, I thought that's what you asked me.
That's, that's what, but you said new sale.
New sales. I'm sorry. New sales. As far as the rest, you know, I think we had, and I don't have that data with me, I think it was 1,200 in August. So from a prior presentation to this council, and that date was November 14th, there were 1,616 building permits in 2016. By one August of 2017, there were 1,075 building permits. We anticipated a total of 2,000 building permits for 2017. And the 1,688 sales and transfers to review was all-inclusive, not just new construction. So that's where the numbers came up with anticipating 3,600.
So new construction, we were talking about 300, is that what you said?
That's my best guess, sir, based on prior years.
Do they, the sales review, does that cover additions to a home, or does that involve in the permitting?
Sales review would, how it would differentiate is if the property didn't change, but it sold. So we analyze the sale to see if it's an arms-length transaction. It's qualified sale, processing that into the system as a transfer.
And what was that number, sales review?
Last, to date, 1,688. We don't always know the condition of the house. You know, if we went out and looked at it in July and it transferred in August, we really don't have to go back out there and look at it again. If we haven't looked at it since a year or two, then we do need to go back out and look at it. So that varies, the work required varies on sales.
Okay. Do we know of the 1,688, how many fall in that category?
No. I don't know that.
Would the system be able to give you that information?
I'm sure it can. Whether or not I can ask it to, that's another question. But I'm sure it can produce that information.
Is there a way to get that information by the next meeting?
I can do my best. You know, I think one thing lost in all this is we're working with a brand-new software application. So it's, for people that have been through a conversion, you know, it can be complex. So it's like working with all these appeals that we've had. We're working them in a brand-new software application. I'm not complaining. It's the best software you can buy. But it's complex. And so to query a system to get that information, I know it can be done. And I know, standing here before you right now, I don't know how to do that. But can I find out how to do it by next week? Yes, I can.
I guess the 3,600 number just, it kind of puzzles me as to why we could not stretch that out over the next three years. Because my understanding in the process is 2018, we will begin to assess one-third of the properties over a three-year period.
Okay. Can I, can I just interject?
Please.
I think that blending a couple of things, yes, we're required by the state of Georgia to review all the property in the county every three years. There is no requirement that says you do a third every year. It only says you are to review the physical characteristics of the property every three years, all properties. We process sales and permits every year. So they may fall into part of that one-third that we would like to review for that year. But we, regardless of the review all properties every three years, we have sales and permits that we review every year. So it's not the same. And I felt like you were kind of lumping it together in the way you were describing that. So I just want to interject that.
Well, as a layperson, I probably was.
Yes, sir. I understand.
It does seem to me to be, since we are where we are this year.
Right.
And we don't know if it's 3,600 or what number it is. Seems to me it might be something less than 3,600. Why would we need, why are we hanging our hat on $104,000 if we're really not sure what the 3,600 number, true number's going to be?
It's, the best estimate that we can produce is the 3,600, looking at to date this year and last year. If that comes up low, I assure you, I've got commercial work, that we will get 3,600 parcels reviewed in this contract by Tyler's staff. Because there's a whole nother set of commercial properties that I have to work with and could easily use the help.
Well, I get, what I was hoping you would say is if we don't have 36, then you would refund the balance back to the city manager.
That I do not know. Randy may be able to answer that question.
What I heard you say is you're going to spend $104,000 no matter what.
Well, let me put it this, I was trying to ease your concern that we weren't going to get our monies worth. But if there is a way to say, you know what, we didn't do 600 parcels, we want that money back, if that's doable, and I'm not an attorney, I don't know. If that is doable, certainly. I won't spend money we don't have to spend.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing you say in breaking this down is that we don't know actually if it's 3,600 or not.
The reason I can't give you an exact number other than 3,600 is because we haven't processed those sales to date.
And if I may, Counselor, would it satisfy you if we use up to 3,600, not to exceed 3,600, and we pay for $29 a parcel based on the number of parcels reviewed, up to 3,600 parcels? And so if they end up with 3,400 parcels, we'll pay them $29 a parcel for 3,400 parcels. And we can even have it specific to residential that he wouldn't be able to take the additional, take 200 other parcels, commercial or otherwise, and have them perform that work just to spend the $104,400 to get to 3,600 parcels.
I agree with you. I think that's the way it ought to be done. And that's where I was headed, was it seems like we should know, that you should be able to hit the button on the computer and it tells you, breaks it down by category, and it tells you which parcels are going to be looked at.
Yeah.
When we're caught up, sir, we will be able to do that.
But you're in here now asking for $104,000. You should have had that information and brought it here, laid it in front of us.
Well, how, if I, if I need help processing the sales and transfers, because we haven't had the manpower to do that, if I'm asking for that help, how can I count that number for you if I've not processed those? Respectfully, sir, I don't, I don't understand.
Well, it's kind of a chicken and egg, isn't it? You're asking us for $104,000 more, but we don't know what it's going to be applied to. And it's a speculation number. Your best guess is 3,600.
Well, and I think we resolve it...
I think the city manager's on the right track, breaking it down and tying it to an identifiable
Yes.
item.
And if you approve it, you, the contract tonight, approve it with that clarification that we will make sure is entered into the contract.
Sorry, Allen. It's in there.
Up to...
Not more than?
Okay.
Not to exceed 3,600.
Then that's what we, yeah. We will ensure that.
Okay. So if it comes in at 3,400?
We will pay them $29 a parcel times 3,400 parcels.
But if it says not to exceed, and based on what Mr. Williams just said, he can take the balance of that and go start working on commercial properties.
No, I think what I said...
Not if you make a motion to include also that the difference of not to use on commercial property.
And Deputy City Manager's telling me is to provide residential is very specific in the contract. So I think that clears it up. And we expect you to hear to the contract, obviously.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me say to Mr. Randolph, he called me earlier this week, and I was out of town on business, and I was not able to get back with him. But I appreciate him reaching out and trying to talk through some of this. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Henderson, I mean, excuse me, Council Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Williams, thank you for being here tonight. I think what we understand here and what's being said is that you're asking for additional services for a, for residential, how did you write, how did, residential field inspections, basically, to go back out. And that weren't completed in 2017. And you've already stated that you want to catch up on everything. And that's kind of why the request is for Tyler coming in and helping out. You know, and I kind of look at this as, you know, Tyler having everything to gain and nothing to lose. And you said earlier, this is somewhat a gift. I don't look at it as being a gift because we're paying for their services. I understand where you're at. I think it's been very clear in what you stated. We, we just went through a county-wide reassessment. It's in, your presentation just stated that you're about to get all the matters of the board equalization taken care of, all that. So the 2017 digest is taking care of its end. I think you're, you've referred to the 2018 digest, but that's not even here. Last time when we asked you to look at the 2016 digest and to carry over so we could give you more time to work through this, you basically said you didn't have time. And that was just a few months ago. We're in December now, and 2018's not even close. So I don't look at 2018 being in jeopardy by what's been stated and what's been stated to this council. I'm looking clearly at the staff reports. I even have the minutes from the Board of Tax Assessors meeting. And it's clearly that you want to go out and you want to do some reviews, 3,600 properties or less, that you're going to go and knock on the doors, and you're going to ask people, let me come in, check out your interiors. And then you're going to ask to look at additional structures and things like that with the intent of going back to the office and redoing the values. So potentially, these 3,600 people that were, or residents that we're talking about, their assessments or values will most likely go up. That's the intent of going back out there just to clarify all this. That's the way I understand it. And you've also been clear about what the state has said. We just turned in the 2017 tax digest and what the state says about you've got three years to, you know, to work it out and clean it up. And what I am understanding is within the three years, you can still make this happen. I think what I'm more concerned about, what I'm more concerned about is what is happening systematically between codes and inspections? When we got new houses or sales and things of that nature that's happening, what is happening in the line of the communication between those guys over there in that department and the Board of Tax Assessors? There should be some way to trigger all this to where it can be done on the front end. And I'm not understanding why that didn't happen or just, everybody just said, we can't do it because we're out of time on, currently on this county-wide reassessment. I don't understand that. But it does concern me, it does concern me, is that something we need to work on from a systematic standpoint to improve how we do our operations around here?
If I might address that, one of the things you said was, and this may be my interpretation of your comments about why we go out and look at sales and transfers, the assumption is the taxes are going up, we're mandated to look at those sales.
Well, you have to. I mean, you have to, or you won't get a value.
Absolutely. We don't have a choice. So we're not going up there out to visit 3,600 people and say, you know what, we're here to raise your taxes. Number one, we don't do taxes, we do assessments. But my point is, we're required to do that. And the idea is to be accurate. We want to... We want our records to be accurate. That's why we go out, not to raise somebody's taxes. We want our assessment to be accurate. So that's just the first thing that I wanted to clarify. Part of this project, the Tyler project, was to actually automate the function of the permits from Inspection and Code directly into IS World. So that has been done as a component of the project. We no longer have to download, download a file and then shuffle through one permit after another and go, oh, okay, this belongs to you, this belongs to you. It's done automatically and, and populates the parcel in IS World automatically, so that in future years, that time that it takes to process permits will be much less. We're doing that now, but we still have to do the inspection. We still have to go out and look at what's been done. Does that add value? Let's make sure our record is accurate. So I think we're, we're on the right path as far as getting to an improved interaction between code and inspection in our office. I'm actually quite pleased with the way that turned out.
No, and I understand that. I think we're on the same page. Everybody, I think everybody knows that these matters are usually on the front end before a CO is given out. I hope this new software, like you're talking about, is going to, going to iron all that out, but that's why I said all this stuff should be done before the CO takes place, and then it's in the system, and you don't have to go back out and, you know, and use your manpower and labor and stress your department as what I really look at this quest, request as, it's stressing what you're telling us from a labor component and trying to make it, make it work right now. But you've got thirty-six hundred properties or less that just didn't get entered into the system, and according to the report here, is that they will go back to the Tax Assessor's Office and be reviewed on the new values. Now, if that's a new bought home, yes, if the new values go up, then yes, the taxes go up.
Absolutely.
If it goes down, depending, I don't know where in their homestead applies, but...
That's right. We won't know until they apply for homestead.
I, I really don't know, but anyway, I, you know, I, we've spent time on it, and I think I've stayed at my position on it. I just want to make sure that what I'm starting to see here is that, you know, we can become more efficient and effective if we have the assurance that the triggers are in place for your people to go and get this work that you're requesting to catch up on. You, you can get that done beforehand, and you won't have to come back and do this again.
Absolutely. I mean, that's...
So, you know, that's my concern, and, you know, I think what I hear you tell me is being worked on, or am I hearing you saying the software's already solved this, or where...
Well, we were speaking of the, the permit component of your comments.
Well, inspections, field inspections, those happen periodically when new homes are built.
Right.
Whenever somebody takes out an application, they go to codes inspections or building, they take out a building permit.
I'm aware.
It's supposed to trigger everything, right?
Right.
And then over time, there's supposed to be some aspect of residential inspections along the way.
One of the additional things that we've done in this process?
Let me finish. Before that, in finality, when they start asking for a CO, they want to move in that house, what I'm saying is, it makes sense that the Tax Assessor's Office or the evaluations should already be in place, the interior inspections, inspections of building structures or anything, all those additions, that should be done, entered into the system before that CO and before people are allowed to get in their homes.
Right.
That should happen.
As you know...
And then you don't get behind.
As you know, what codes and inspections does and what they inspect is different than what we do. You know that. So they're going to have a multitude of inspections along a typical construction that we don't. We're looking at, is it finished? Right? So we get the permit, and something that we've done in the past that we've now corrected, because it didn't make sense to me either, we'd get that permit, and then we go, oh, we have a permit, we need to put it over here, and at a certain time of year, we're going to go review these permits. So we'd go out before the CO was issued, or before we knew it was complete. So, you know, at some stage, everybody that's been involved in real estate, there's a certain stage of, of construction that you can actually get the physical measurements of the outside of the house, which is what square footage is determined by. Even though it's not complete, you can still do that.
Well, then, don't the plans have to be submitted?
Plans have to be submitted.
So you should know those...
Yes, sir, and, and as you know, plans and, and the final product are not always the same thing.
Well...
I mean, they are not always the same thing.
If they change it, I'm hoping it's resubmitted or the inspector will pick up on that.
Right. Possibly. But, I mean, it could be flipped, it could be anything, so we want accurate information, data. So we're going to go out there, but what we're, we're doing now is, we're not going to waste our time going back out to see if it's complete, we're going to wait for somebody to tell us it's complete, then we're going to go.
Well, what I hear you saying is you prefer it done that way, and that, you know, my concern is the triggers that alert you guys to go do the work before the final CO is given or the permits are given, so you don't have to go out after the fact and do these inspections or whatever it needs to be done. I'm just thinking about, we've always talked about how, where do we get from here today, or...
Yes.
What we just gone through. If we're going to correct it in the future, these are things that we can all learn from.
Right.
And I would, the city manager, if, if possible, I think Mr. Williams and I are on the same page on this, but, you know, maybe that's, you know, maybe there can be some conversations there to, to make sure that, that, maybe there's a way to do it, a better system, I don't know, but it does concern me, and I just raised the, I just raised the, the, the point there.
Yeah.
Maybe it's already being done, I don't know, but it just strikes me in this conversation is that's, could be part of the systematic problem here that we're experiencing.
Well, I, I, I hear your concern, and, and I can say to you that we do have the triggers in place. If you go and get a permit, or if a CO is issued, it's going to be entered into the system, and they're, they're being notified as we speak with a permit or CO. You know, I'll talk to inspections and Codes and see if there's a way, because what I hear you saying is, if the permit is entered into the system, you could go out there and see that they framed something, but they're not done, and so it, it appears to me you got the, the permit maybe prematurely. It, it could be that the permit is entered into the system, and I'm, I'm just talking because they're going to tell me, no, you can't do it that way possibly, but if, if a person is, is issued a permit, and we know that the inspectors are going to go out there at various intervals to inspect, it could be, I don't know, they, they, they will probably tell me it can't be done, but it could be that the permit is not entered into the system until it's three-fourths of the way complete, so that when it's entered into the system and they go out there, it's, it's nearly a finished product. I, I don't know, but we can talk about that. But I hear your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another, one more part of this, I tell you, I'm really, you know, we just went through a quite stressful and painful aspect of all this, you know, to, to what we've got through, and I think we're finally getting through it and seeing the light, but I, I do have a concern that once these inspectors from Tyler start knocking on doors, that it's just going to stir up a hornet's nest.
There's nothing I can do about the perception of people when somebody comes knocking at their door. They're going to have their identification, it's going to be posted on our website and on the city website, what's going on, that there will be inspectors coming out. We don't always get on the inside of the house, that's actually pretty rare. Strapping houses, measuring houses, doing everything they're going to do, we're going to try to make that known in every way we can, so that we can at least get the information out in advance. How someone's going to react to whether it's a Tyler appraiser or one of our appraisers, they get a, a very wide range of responses. We're not liked by everyone. I know that may come as a surprise to you. Appraisers, I've been one for twenty-six years, you've got a bullet, a target on your back. Somebody, somebody may like you, the other party won't. It doesn't, you know how it is.
I feel like that sometimes.
Right. So, but we're going to do everything we can to communicate that. We talked about not being done, or those permits and sales just sitting there. The reason why I couldn't answer your question, sir, about how many, they're, they're waiting on us to process them. It's in the system, so the permits are in the system. The sales are there, the deeds, which we look at and make sure all that's correct. We're, we're doing that now. We're processing those deeds, and that's part of processing those sales. So we still have lots of work to do to get to the point where we can engage Tyler to do this three-month contract, but it's very much needed, and if...
Well, Mr. Williams, I really thank you for accommodating us, and it never hurts to request or to ask when you, you need it. I mean, that's just the way it works around here, and I really appreciate you always being open and forthright and willing to, you know, to, to come before us and answer our questions to the best of your ability, and, and I've always appreciated that, from a leadership standpoint, that you, it shows to me that you have a desire to improve and to do better and to be the best you can in the field that you are as we, as we, as the years go by. So I respect that and appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I know we've been talking a lot about this, and I just felt kind of compelled to make a statement as to why I've supported this the first time around, and why I'm going to support it again. And what I, it's not really in the form of questions, you can just correct my misstatements, because this is a complicated issue.
Very.
To me, I was harkening back to when you first came to us and told us that this was a likelihood, and we talked about the different options being extending or a, a, a work order to Tyler, or to hiring independent fee appraisers, or to hire people full-time. And I think what we, we decided was probably the least painful way at the time when we discussed it was allow Tyler to do it for the thirty dollars or whatever it was then per parcel, but we were going to put out an RFP so that we could kind of double-check ourselves and see if, what the fee appraisers would say they would do this work for, so that we could kind of have them on standby in the event your shortage of, of appraisers ever created a situation where we weren't able to get through the digest in the time we met. To me, the risk was too great, which is why I supported it last, last week. I get it. I know people are disappointed in the way this process went, and I think if you were, if I were to ask you, you would probably tell me you're disappointed in the way that this impacted so many people. That's certainly not the way y'all want the efforts of the Tax Assessor's Office to be perceived.
Absolutely.
However, last week, it just occurred to me that there are only two other options, really. One is just to deny access to any additional help and say, just deal with it, you're going to have to get it done, and there's not a doubt in my mind that your appraisers would have done the work. What scared me was, how long would that work take? If it took them into June or July, and then we found ourselves in a situation where we were unable to print our valuation statements that go out in order to prompt the bills, which would allow us for two deposits by the taxpayers, one in October, which is, we found out, and man, I'm telling you, the school district sure found out, that without access to that money, that severely impacts the residents of this community, severely. We would just get the one payment in December. Now, we were very fortunate, we had to issue the, or didn't issue the tans, but we closed on the ability to, to access a line of credit, basically, that I don't think we had, had to do, because we have, I think, by and large, done as good a job as, as we can under economic circumstances at managing the general fund. But to me, that risk, that particularly the school district and us, if we were to be short again, if we were in the same position next year, it, it just, to me, that was a risk I wasn't willing to take last week. So I checked with, I talked with some of the tax assessors, and I also talked with some fee appraisers, because I wanted an idea of whether or not I was barking up the wrong tree, so to speak. And I think it's important for folks to understand what each one of these is. When we talk about new construction, I hope Counselor Davis is right, because we've got to look for ways to streamline the way government does things. We've, we've got to find more efficiencies in the way we conduct business on a regular basis. I love the idea of communicating with Codes and Inspection, with the, and the inspectors, and leveraging the time of the appraisers to try to make it work the way it's supposed to. I think one challenge you're going to have is with new construction, an appraiser typically does an estimate of value based on the plan, so that they can initiate the loan process. That lender is going to probably demand a revisit of the property to determine that it was built in, in accordance with the plans that they spent. So unless we can get some give on, on the mortgage companies in, I think it still may be a little bit of a challenge. The permits are, are different, because the way I understand it, that's if somebody's going to add a kitchen, or, or, or they're going to put a mother-in-law suite, or they're going to build, build another bedroom. And in that instance, to me, the reason that seems so important that we get out there and put eyes on it is, we have to make sure that's accurate, because even if their property is frozen through homestead, the additional value created by that kitchen or that mother-in-law suite or that, that bedroom will be added to their frozen value. And it's frozen, and it's a common, I think, misunderstanding, it doesn't unfreeze your property, but it does add the value that you created when you, when you made the addition.
Correct.
So it's imperative that we get that right, because it's going to, it's going to affect what they're, they're paying, and it's going to be different than what they've been paying for a lot of years. And the other side of that is, if we don't have an accurate value for the properties that have been newly constructed, have changed hands, or we have improved the property in some way, then it could impact somebody else in that neighborhood when you're using sales to try to determine what should happen to their particular properties. It could impact it up or down. So to me, I, I recognize that it, it had to be done, the work had to be done. The fee appraisers I checked with, I asked them, I said, what would you, what would you offer your services for, at what rate? To do field work, to go out there and just run a tape, take some pictures, and get it to the guys so they could enter it in, in the system. I didn't find a single one that'd do it front of a hundred bucks. Now, I can't say I'm the biggest Tyler fan in the room either, but I recognize that at twenty-nine dollars a property, that's probably the cheapest we're going to be able to get that done. I do want to continue, I do want to go and put an RFP out so that we can check ourselves and make sure, but, but I, I wanted folks to understand why we were voting for this. This wasn't just blindly casting a vote to hire Tyler to come in there and do some additional work. This was because sometimes we have to do what we think is right, and sometimes what we think is right, there are a few folks that are going to disagree. And to put the taxpayers at risk by possibly having to deal with another tan, certainly dealing with a, an opportunity to not have access to revenue that we use to pay our bills, it just wasn't worth it to me. So, and, and anything I messed up in my definitions, please, please correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas, did you have, did you have your light on? I see no questions. What's the pleasure of counsel? Asking proper motions, moved in second, that C, purchase C on the city manager's agenda to be approved. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Is it keyed in? Huh?
It's in the system. There it is. Put your vote.
Okay.
Oops, sorry. I hit the wrong button. A mistake. It's supposed to be green.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
I said six-four. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. There are none other questions.
Okay, so we'll go back to the city attorney's agenda.
Is that right? Yes. All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. First item up on our agenda is the vote on the Waverly Terrace Historic District Parcels. It's ready for adoption.
You have a motion in the second, that the ordinance on, the second reading ordinance on the Waverly Terrace be approved. Any questions? If that can be keyed in, or if you'll take the vote?
Uh-huh. Looks like that passes.
Looks like that passes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the petition for St. Mary's Road, forty-two sixty-one. Ms. Lewis, it's recommended conditional approval. It's ready for a vote.
You have a motion and a second that be be approved, St. Mary's Road. Any questions? Take a vote. That passes.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, that has passed. Next item, Mayor Protem, the petitioner was not present last week, but Mr. Holly and Mr. Patel are here this week, so we would need a motion to let them come up and speak and tell you what they're proposing.
Listen, we have a motion and a second that the petition be allowed to come forward. So if you please come forward. All those in favor of that motion?
Yeah. Mr. Holly, come on up. Mr. Patel.
Are there, anybody, anybody against that motion? Okay.
Nobody opposed. If you would, give them your name and address, please, for the record, and then tell them what your application is for.
Yes. My name is Danny Holly, and this is Alex Patel. And it's in regards to rezoning for eighty-five forty-one Veterans Parkway. It's three point four-five acres, trying to get rezoned to a general commercial. It has nine hundred foot of road frontage there on Veterans Parkway. I was reading through the paperwork. Hey, I apologize for us not being here last week, but I didn't receive the notification. I've been on my part or from email. I was out of town. I'd gotten a call just last night, and I'd gotten back in in regards to meeting today. So I apologize if we weren't here last week. Their original denial had talked about, um, not in the resemblance of the area surrounding it. Everything up Veterans Parkway, this is all the way at the end of the four lane, and it would be on the west-hand side if you were heading north. And like I said, it's nine hundred foot of property. What we were looking at doing is a retail-type center, similar to several of them that I've built there on Veterans Parkway already. I guess the most recent would be right there next to Walgreens, the Eco Clean Shopping Center. This is an overlay area, and we do realize that we would have to put the design, an upper-class design and landscape for the area of the three point five acres. And we definitely feel like that would be an asset, visual, curb appeal, for the community. It talks about the cost that it would take for the development. And that's one of the reasons that I think that it would really only be feasible for the commercial development, because cost would be, be cost prohibitive to do anything in a residential aspect of three point five acres. There is no sewer to this property. Again, it has nine hundred foot of road there on Veterans Parkway, and everything going up and down Veterans Parkway of the four lane. I'd also constructed the fire station quite a while back there by the north-side school. And I even saw back then where that development of four lane is going to continue going north, up past where the school's at. The cost of the development and the cost of the, of the land site work to be residential, again, without any sewer inside there, three point four-five acres, if you use a concept of two acres, so you have your septic system, if it ever failed, you would have to relocate it. So generally, concept is two acres for a residential site. Doesn't really even allow enough for two homes to go on it. So that's why I just wanted to kind of bring a few of those points forward. And it seems like they've had, it notes here, they've had thirty-four owners. I don't know of any opposition. Not, not saying that we don't have any that I don't know of, but as of this notice right here, there's been no emails or, or, uh, any calls in regard to it. Like, again, I'm not sure of the no opposition, but based on this information, I don't see any opposition that we've had. Would have to level the lot. It talks about a retainer wall that has to be constructed inside there to get the lot level for a construction basis, and all those is part of the reasons half a million dollars of site work. But it's not feasible for a residential lot at that location. So I hope I hadn't said too much and answered any questions that you might have. Tried to cover it in just one scenario. Any questions you might have for me?
You got one?
I have a question for Mr. Jones. I'd like to hear from Mr. Jones why the planning advisory and the planning department said no, or denied it.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Protem, and members of council. This does come to you with a double denial, which is the, which is the rarest issuance from, from both of us on this. Concern was about, in, in dealing with this project is the, the property itself and how it was situated, in terms of how you're going to get the building on site. If you've ever been out, out veterans, just right there at Galena, you know that, that Galena goes straight up for the most part. And everything they're looking at in terms of dealing with this lot, they're going to have to actually cut back into that, that embankment there to make this whole site work. It's not like this simple thing of going out there and just putting it in there, that standpoint. It doesn't marry up with the, with the comprehensive plan, in terms of recalling more along for mixed use, more than just, just single commercial uses here at this time. It is a single family right now from that aspect of it. We're also concerned by additional curb cuts at this time, right now, on veterans. We are getting, going through that process of widening that road and trying to mitigate as much as we possibly can additional curb cuts as we go along in, in that roadway. So I hope, Counselor Thomas, that gives you some idea of what we're trying to, trying to achieve here.
And, Mr. Jones, it, it seems that I recall that that portion of Veterans Parkway, that widening was one of the, the transportation splotch projects, and that Veterans Highway twenty-seven is going to be four-laned on into Harris County. Is that still in the works?
Yes, ma'am. There, there is another, another phase coming behind. The, the actual, actual piece right now is not under the T-splotch funding source. There is another, another phase of coming. It is part of the T-splotch. It is under design right now. It will run basically right there at Hancock, all the way into, up to Catala. And from what I've seen about that, that conversation right now, they are looking at trying to maintain as much as they possibly can the existing footprint of the roadway itself. Now, I mean, they'll widen it out, but they're not, we, you all have seen different, different variations of that thing going off in different directions. That's the idea now anyway. And in some cases, when they get to Harris right now, it may actually taper down to a three lane for the time being. But they are getting ready to come back and widen that project out. I was hopeful they were going to have a public hearing on that by, before the end of the year, but that's not going to happen. So I would hope sometime early next year, they'll actually have a public meeting on that section of roadway as it goes forward.
And, um, I guess one of my concerns, too, is, is traffic already in that area. And with a, a convenience store there, it will just add to that, or the, the congestion, I guess, with the high school and the other two schools there and so forth. I'm just a little concerned about that. But both the planning department and PAC denied that, denied the request, right?
Correct.
Can, can they come back to you with a different configuration that you guys may, may be more willing to accept?
The, they, they may come back to us within six months of your, of your decision, should you decide to deny for reconsideration. They'll have to wait a year, though, if they're going to come back basically with the same idea.
I'm having a hard time here.
I'm sorry. Let me try to restate that to you. Excuse me. If, if, should council recommend and, and, and deny the application, they can come back within six months with, with another, another concept, another idea for the project. If they're coming back with the same project, they have, still have to wait, wait, have to wait another year. Make that happen.
Any other counselor questions?
You finished, Counselor Henderson? Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. Real quickly, Mr. Jones, this is a question for you, too. Remind us again what constitutes mixed use?
I'm sorry, I, I-
Remind us again what constitutes mixed use, the future land use as mixed use. Does that typically include GC as well?
It could. Mixed use typically has a, has a residential component-
Right.
And a retail, or a commercial, or office. Those are the kind of mixed uses we normally look for.
And that's what I was trying to just make sure, that it wasn't, it wasn't completely out of character for what we see that could go out.
Could.
The other question I have, and, and frankly, I just, this is kind, and this is for, I think, both you and city attorney. When I see something with a severe elevation change, I immediately think of that drugstore we did on Macon Road years ago. And we still have trouble with that. And we were told that they were going to mitigate that with, with some drainage plans, with some, a, a, a very strong and secure wall, retaining wall. And we, we have still had some, some drainage issues out there. And I, I apologize in advance for asking this. I'm not suggesting this, but has there ever been any type of legal instrument that would allow us to maybe ask the developers to place a bond on it for X number of years and protecting some type of damage as a result? I know we've never done it, but when we're, when we're going to make contiguous properties that wide of, of a, a gap in, in the intensive, intensity of the use from a GC to residential, I, I think we, I, I'm just really wary of allowing any kind of development that would pour that kind of water down into a residential area. We've, we've, we've lived it before, and, and-
Counselor Henderson, I, I'm working off memory here now, but I, I, I do seem to recall in other communities, there may have been, don't hold me to this, there may have been a situation where they required that. I don't, and legally, I don't know what, how that stands, Mr. Faye. I don't know.
We've had many rezonings where you put in a condition to require a drainage plan approved by our director of engineering. What that may entail, it may be very expensive.
And I, and I, I can appreciate that, but frankly, I don't think that goes far enough is to give us a plan. We've seen plans, and they do, I mean, not these gentlemen, but developers have done plans throughout the community, and we've ended up with situations that, that, that we had some water issues. And what I'm looking for is, is a stick to go with a carrot. I'm looking for something that will allow us to, even if it won't work with these gentlemen, that will allow us to encourage them to remain financially responsible for any kind of remediation if we get to a situation like that.
Yeah, I don't recall ever a bond requirement on a zoning-
I don't think we have ever. I'm interested, can we?
We'd have to research that. I know you can put restrictive covenants and future deeds. We've done that as a condition, but not any bonding.
And I'm not suggesting I would never do that without talking to y'all first, but I just, I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to think around this issue that, that I have with it anyway, with, with regards to the elevation change. Mr. Holly, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Some of what they're doing with the city right now is they're moving, instead of top surface water, they're moving all this to an underground detention system.
So if you'll come up to the mic.
You'll step up to the mic so that the, they can hear you. No, I hear you fine, but we want-
A lot, a lot of the trouble that you have is for surface water on the, on the commercial development, residential also. But I know more of what they've done for the commercial side of it. And what they've done for the commercial side of it is now they're more going to the underground detention. It's a lot more expensive, you know, could be fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars of piping that goes underground. It holds this retention water and slowly lets it out. Instead of the detention pond and the surface water on top of the ground, as they used to do it, where you have your erosion and your problems there, now they're piping it, they're putting it in the concrete, they're putting it underneath the parking lot, and they're retaining it there, so you don't have the problems that you're talking about. And that's the same way that this project would be developed, would have the full engineer inside there that would put and put this in a detention basis that would be underneath the parking lot in a pipe system. And that is, that, that's the way that they're doing now. As we submit our plans to be approved, they're allowing less surface water on commercial properties and more underground detention. And that way, everything's in a pipe, and it doesn't have the erosion problems. We also have nine hundred foot of frontage on this property. We're talking about the, the, the egress in and the egress out. It's not a tight lock. We do several of them that are very tight. It does get a little bit tight, or tight to a, to a, a, a stop, a stoplight. That, that, they don't want it to back up into that stoplight. We have no stoplight at either side. We have nine hundred foot of frontage to be able to allow the engineers to do the proper design to access and exit the property. And then the water retention would be in an underground pipe system, as we're doing now in the new, modern times, instead of surface water flowing on top for erosion problems.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Henderson, to your, to your question, I, I do recall a situation when we dealt with Walmart up there at Gateway, where we required them to put in certain improvements, particularly a signal in, out there in front of, of Winterfield, when it became necessary. And we required them to put a bond at that time. So there is some precedence for that. But again, we'd have to do a little more research to be absolutely sure.
Do you, do you remember if this type of retention system was used at Walgreens? And I don't mean to use the name. I'm not casting spurs on, but I do-
No, I, I do not, unless-
DOT does require that bond that you're talking about. When I do something with the DOT, and I access an apron with DOT, they do require a bond on that aspect.
I wonder if it will be feasible, maybe get a report from our engineer on the system that Mr. Holly's talked about. And, and if that's the case, I think it would only be fair to delay.
She's here. It can be delayed. Ms. Newman, can you comment on that type system?
Counselor Henderson-
Ma'am.
The drugstore you're talking about is the Walgreens drugstore by University Avenue. Where we had the problems, the water ran out and out. I don't remember us ever talking about underground retention powers back, back then.
Yeah. And I know it was, I mean, it was, it was one of those days where there was a very, very steep elevation change, and the residents were very concerned. And, you know, I mean, water's going to go where water's going to go. And, and as it turned out, it was not captured quite the way we, we wanted it to. Don, do you want, have any comments on the retention system they're talking about?
Sure. Just for clarification, we're talking two different situations. In that particular case that you're referring to, that was actually a creek that went through there, went through their property. And so with their detention system, because they had so much flow, they had to bypass, if you will. They didn't have enough area to retain the, the amount of flow, because it was a large acreage that was draining through there. That was the difference in the, the system. What Mr. Holly is referring to is commonly used on commercial properties. We see it on a, a large part of those, depending on the site and how much drainage area we're talking about. It's commonly used. And there, and there are different methods of doing that, but it is common, because typically on commercial sites, you're using a lot more of the area. So you're forced to put it underground than on a detention pond-type situation.
But the life expectancy on that type of solution is about comparable to a, like a detention pond?
Well, it goes back to what we've discussed in more recent months, as you may well be aware of, and I'm sure most of you are receiving calls, where we're now going out and inspecting those and requiring them to maintain those and inspect them annually. So the life of that system would be a lot longer than some of the ones in the past, where we didn't have that accountability for the owners.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Mr. Holly and Mr. Patel, I understand that you're looking to do a project, and, and that's okay, but, you know, there's, the staff has, has mentioned a few things here about the compatibility and the residential aspect of this, and as well, you know, it looks like there's going to be a restaurant or a potential bar, which could be, you know, kind of in, like another Maple Mart or something like that. And, you know, it does bring up a lot of, a lot of concerns. You've got some serious investment right across the street from it, over in a section of Maple-
of Maple Ridge, and then you have these residents on Galena Road. I'm more concerned about the values, that if a project like this, like you're stating that you want to do, goes into this area, it's gonna seriously have an effect on the values of these homes. So I can understand the compatibility of it, in that aspect, it does have a double denial on it. Director Jones, it's a rarity that they would bring something like that to us, and, you know, in understanding this, the shape of the lot, where it's at, all factors involved, I have to tend to agree with him, so I cannot be in support of this request for this project.
Two of those are only lots, so there's only two houses, they're older houses. Mr. Patel's been working with the owners to purchase those properties also. There's no new homes or development at all that backs up to it, or adjacent to it, or touches it, but there are two empty lots that are residential, that it shows to be changed in the future as mixed use, and there's two older homes that back up to it, again, that Mr. Patel's working with the owners to try and purchase.
I'm looking at the house right here, but like I said, right across the street of it is, you're looking at half a million to a million dollar houses right across the street from this, in Maple Ridge.
Inside, inside subdivision, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Just for the record, I asked-
Councilor Allen.
In the petition, you were offered three options for a buffer. Have you decided?
Actually, we would do that, and we would do that, but once we get to the approval, then it would go to full engineering, and then the engineer would actually do it per Eric, as the arborist, for the amount of landscaping, and again, it is the overlay area, so it would have to have a lot more decor than the normal commercial areas that are not in that overlay zone. But all that would be in the development and design from engineering, still to be approved by the city. And again, we don't have any sewer there, so to be residential property, it would require a septic system of, I guess, one house, or maybe two.
Thank you.
But all that engineering would be done and be approved by the city for future. Nothing could be, nothing would be done without the approval and design from the engineers and the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, somebody requested a delay out of-
Anybody in the audience that wants to be heard at all on this petition? I don't see any hands.
Councilor Davis had a question.
Is there a request to delay this, Councilor Henderson?
No, not really. The only reason I was curious about a delay was whether, I was afraid we might not be able to get the information from our engineering in time for us to make an informed decision, but no, I think we're okay.
Well, I make a motion consistent with the Planning Department and the Planning Advisory Committee as a denial.
Councilor Henderson, do you have a question? There's a motion in a second to deny the petition, right?
That's correct.
Any questions? Key at the voting. Yes is to deny, no is-
Oh, wait.
Yes is to deny, right?
Correct.
Just reset, reset.
Let me re-
That petition has been denied, Mr. Holly, Mr. Patel, and you can work with Mr. Jones, maybe in the future, as he says, to come back.
Okay, thank you very much for y'all's time. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Patel, the next item we need to vote on is the budget reconciliation final for FY seventeen. It's ready for action.
There's a motion in a second to approve the budget, the million budget items for fiscal year 2017. Fiscal year ending June thirty of 2017. Any other questions? Key at the voting. That passes.
Okay, passes. The resolution we have, Mayor Patel, is for perversion to two payments for property taxes, two tax installments, forty percent becoming due October one, sixty percent due on December one of 2018, and that has to be passed this year, that's why it's here now.
To the motion, Councilor Davis.
Mr. City Attorney, is this just routine, or is this a new change coming from the state, or are we just-
No, what you did in the prior fiscal year was change to one due date, December one, which is the current due date, for twenty-seven taxes. This would be 2018 and all future tax years, you'd be reverting to your two installment payment system.
I got you, so we changed, we changed this year, we had to change my resolution, we're just putting it back in place.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution.
All right, looks like that has passed. Mayor Patel, we'd like a short executive session on property acquisition and litigation, but that's all we have listed.
Okay. Public agenda. The City Manager.
I believe Ms. Iris Tate is here, but I did commit it to members of council, that we would take a look at the discussion last week. We did not know, because it was not published, that they were on public agenda, and we were not prepared to talk about the situation at twenty-three eighteen Whitechapel Drive. I do have our risk manager here and our Public Works Director, and of course, if you want to have her speak first, that's fine, but I do want them to share information with you, facts with you, and, but we'll say in advance that we do acknowledge that we did some work on that property, at least removing some limbs and repairing the fence, two or three different teams, and we have gone out to take a look at the situation, and we do have a chronology, but I believe it's my understanding that Public Works Director sent me an email very late this evening that indicated the fence has been repaired, and I don't think we know who repaired it. So would you just come around, and I will say that her email that came to me very late this evening, just before I came over, did indicate that the tree remains that was left, that you found, were fresh cut, maybe. Why don't you tell us what you know, and then, of course, if you want to hear from Ms. Tate, of course, she's on public agenda, I think you should hear from her.
Councilor Barnes.
Yes, I made sure that, I called it in myself, that she was on the-
She's on now, but I'm saying last week.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, it wasn't printed, and that's why we didn't have staff here to address it.
That was my misunderstanding.
Yeah, but why don't you talk about that?
Okay.
And this is because I told you I would research it, look into it, and come back to you.
At your request, I've prepared a chronology of the calls to Public Works through three-one-one, and requests made to us. First, let me apologize, the address is twenty-eight thirteen Whitechapel Drive, not the opposite. So we did a little switching of numbers there. First of all, I thought it would be helpful to have a map to show twenty-eight thirteen is located in the curb, curve there, and backed up to this natural preserve area. I did find that there were deed restrictions on the natural area, it is a preservation area, and under the terms of the deed restrictions, it must stay vegetated unless used for recreational purposes. It's a protected area. I went back to 2010 to see how many calls had come into Public Works, and there, in fact, have been six, if you count last week's council meeting and the requests that were made at that meeting. Back in 2011, we had two calls. In May twenty-fifth, there was a limb over the fence, and we removed that June first. October eleventh, there was another limb on the fence, and that was removed October twelve. In 2015, we did not have any calls in twelve, thirteen, or fourteen. In 2015, there was a call about a fallen limb in front of the address. When we got there, we found that it was in the back, and we went out, found a tree bent over the fence, and also a large hanging limb in an adjacent tree, and we removed those. Also, there is a very large oak tree there that we checked out, because they had expressed concern, and found that it was healthy. On March nineteenth, a few days later, they called back, they were still concerned about the large oak tree, so we placed it on our pruning list. Not top priority, because it wasn't deemed to be unsafe, but certainly, we felt that the pruning would not hurt the tree and would benefit their peace of mind. So we pruned that large oak, and cut several small trees on August twenty-fifth in 2015. Then, we did not receive another call from them until July third of this year. We got a call about a tree on the fence, we investigated, and actually found it was just a limb, a leader, but it was a limb, and we removed that limb on July fifth. On July eleventh, we also assigned our contractor to do some additional pruning in the area, anything that looked questionable. On August twenty-third, when it came up on the pruning list, the contractor pruned and cut small trees, and then asked the citizen if they would like them to remove the debris. The citizen's response was no, it's okay where it's at. The contractor reports that he also asked at that time if they wanted him to repair the fence, and the citizen responded in the negative, that they would get the city to make the repairs. As requested at council, there was debris there, and so we were asked to remove it, and that has been done. This is the before shot, and you can see all the debris that's lined up there. In addition, and some tree stubs that are there, and this is the after shot, you can see that the debris has been removed, and don't know who did it, but the fence is at least put back together again. And that is the history with Public Works.
Councilor.
And so, Mayor Patel, with that, certainly we can hear from Ms. Tate, but we'll be happy answering questions, and I would just remind you that this area is a heavily, I don't know what the acreage is out there, but it's the soccer complex.
Soccer complex is out there.
And it's heavily, heavily wooded, a large acreage, and it would, there's a deed restriction, and we just can't go out there and just cut down trees, especially live trees, and so, and so it's, it's a situation where I think you can see from the dates and the chronology provided, I think we've tried to be considerate, considering it is a heavily forested area with lots of trees, and, you know, and I want to say that I believe our risk manager and Public Works have tried to be considerate, and they've done a good job, and I even went so far as to inquire with insurance agents about how that, how it works when your property is abutted by trees that are live, and, for example, if a tree falls on your fence, if your tree is live, and it falls on your neighbor's fence, you know, you would automatically think that it would be your responsibility to repair that fence, because it's your tree on your property. But I encourage you to talk to some claims adjusters with insurance companies and see what they tell you, you'd be surprised if it's a live tree. Your own, their homeowner's insurance would be required to repair a fence from a tree that falls from your property, if that tree was not dead. But, you know, we've tried to be accommodated in the past, and I see that some level of repair has been made to the fence. You know, I'll be happy to look at it administratively, and I don't know what additional work is needed with the fence, but I'll be happy to take a look at it, because I want to be careful that, that we be consistent in the way we handle claims, and those, that handling of claims would be consistent with the way any insurance company would handle the claims. So I think some level of work has been done, debris has been removed, and I don't know if you all know who repaired the fence.
No, sir.
But I'd be interested in finding out, and then, and so I'd love to be able to handle it from here administratively, if you'd like for me to.
And what do we have? Excuse me. Councilor Allen.
I just wanted to ask an administrative question, I won't take but a minute, I'm sorry. The report that was sent out talks about a chronology of events where the limbs fell, the tree was assessed, and some pruning occurred, fence was repaired, at least a couple times, by the city, okay? When the assessment occurred, was the arborist involved in that? I mean, how does that, who makes the assessment?
Well, I'd have to have staff to respond to that, and I guess it would be from a standpoint that the arborist determined that the trees were diseased, dead, or were they healthy trees?
We do use a certified arborist for any evaluation of that type. We actually have three or four on our staff who are nationally certified, so we have, we're blessed with some talent there. And yes, they will decide if the tree is not healthy, obviously, and they, there's a national scoring system that's used. The oak tree that we were talking about, the very large oak, scored around a seventy-five, and that's on a scale of one to a hundred, so that tree is very, very healthy. Some of the smaller trees didn't have a high value and weren't necessarily in the best of shape, and those were removed when they were identified, and we tried to create a, you know, kind of a buffer zone away from the fence with the smaller things that were coming up.
But the reports do not mention an arborist involvement.
And that's, you're right, and I should have said that, but an arborist did do those evaluations.
Okay, so if we assessed the tree, and we determined it was healthy, but limbs are still falling, then they- but limbs are still falling, then there, there's...
If the limbs that are, if the limbs that are falling are dead limbs off of a bad tree, then that is something that we would look at and remove the tree potentially. But if the limbs that are falling are green, that's usually something that takes place during a storm, and the weather and the wind has brought them down. Which is a good indicator for us usually of whether there's a problem there. And if we were seeing dead limbs, we would be looking for the source of those dead limbs.
Well, to me, regardless of whether they're dead or not, it's our tree. It fell, it damaged property. Request was made at least twice, we know of. Repairs were made by, at our cost. And this app has happened again, and now they're requesting for it to be made again. So, there's a precedent there, in my opinion.
The repairs actually were not supposed to be made, but I think they, the staff felt that they were small, and they were trying to accommodate, and they took care of it.
But there's a precedent there because they made the, I mean, if this is the only house in the area where the tree, limbs are falling, and we're going out and removing the limbs and fixing the fence, then the precedent's there. I mean, it just...
Well...
Whether it was well-intended or not, the precedent's there. And my understanding of the pictures that they showed is it's minimal. The repairs are minimal. I mean, we've wasted a lot of time, a lot of staff time. We could have just fixed this in Australia and been done with it. Would you do that?
And that's, and I do concur that we, if we had known, if I had known at the last meeting, and as I said, staff did not know they were going to appear because we would have been here with what we have tonight. And so, we did spend a considerable amount of time. And now, where there's some mystery person, persons who pretty much repaired it, I don't know if it's 100% to satisfaction, but if it's, I, I, I'll be happy to look at it. And, and I will say to you that, you know, based on the, the reports that I get from reliable people in the insurance industry, we were not responsible, and we should not have repaired it the two times. But we did, but we did, or three times. And now, we're where we are. And so, and here we are tonight, and I'll be happy to take a look at it to make, to, to make sure it's, it's to satisfaction. But it, it is not something, I can tell you, let a, a healthy live tree fall from your house to your neighbor's house and tear the fence down, and try and get, and your neighbor try and get you to pay for it. Talk to your insurance agent.
Well, I can tell you this, I had a tree in my yard.
Yeah.
And it was a big pine tree. And my neighbor sent me a certified letter and said, "If this tree falls on my house, I want you to know what I'm gonna do."
Yeah.
And I had a guy come out and take the tree down.
Well, and I will say to you... And let me just say to you what I, as the agent, the insurance person, if it was a healthy tree, and the neighbor, and a limb falls on the neighbor's fence, the neighbor's insurance is responsible. And I said, "What if that neighbor says, 'I know your trees are healthy, but your limb has fallen on my tree, and I'm telling you, I'm warning you that you need to get that tree down.' And I don't get it down, and another limb falls on the tree, who's responsible?" And the adjuster says, "Your neighbor's homeowner's insurance is responsible, it's a healthy tree." I just encourage you, talk to your insurance folk and see what they tell you. Don't take my word, I see, Councilor Henderson, I mean, Davis, you're doing this because you probably know that what I'm telling you is what, the way it works. And so, I don't want to focus on that. Fence has been repaired to some extent, I'll be happy to look at it. I'm just telling you what the insurance rules are. Councilor Davis, I see you continuing to say that because that's how it works. But we went out two or three times, and, yeah.
Well, I have to get these questions answered first, and then we'll go on. Councilor Henderson?
I'll actually yield and let them respond to the chronology that we just heard. And that way, it may, may wipe out some of my questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You may, if it's okay with the Mayor Protim, y'all can respond if you wish.
Mr. Hughley, I totally agree with you, consistency is key. And if you...
Can't hear you, ma'am.
Consistency is key. And if you come out in, in 2011 for the same set of circumstances, and my parents, they said, "These trees are rotten." They asked, and she kind of can, she implied that, they said that they were healthy, and so they couldn't just cut them down, they could only prune them. They're not arborists, they just live there, it's not their property.
Right.
And she said to them, "Please, sir, cut these trees down." Not just one, they're now claiming that it's not the same tree, ironically, once we asked for them to pay for the damage. Now, when they came to the house, they didn't say to my parents, "Hey, I know you're asking for us to pay for the damage, but this is a different tree." They didn't indicate that. It was only after we sent the letter that they come up with, "This is a different tree, and therefore now an act of God," because they didn't have prior knowledge. And I took the time myself to research the law. And nowhere does it say that we have to continuously call you to give you knowledge. Knowledge is knowledge, if you know it today, or if you know it six years from now. Knowledge is knowledge.
That's right.
They had knowledge in 2011 that there was an issue with these trees. And we're not talking about the heavily wooded area two miles down the road at the soccer field. We're talking about 10 feet away from the property line that butts up to our, to our property line. I get that we can't go out there and point out all the trees, but these are elderly people, and they did the best that they could do to say to them, "These trees are a concern, all of them." We, the first incident, the limb fell, it tore up the tree, it tore up the fence. We don't know what made them fix it, or why, but they fixed it. So, they own the issue now, to me. That is, they set a precedent, I agree with what you said. And now, it's, it's, it was your tree, and now you can see that there's an issue, and you accepted liability then, in our eyes. And then, the second time when we called, same set of circumstances, same group of trees, same ideal thing in the same spot on the same fence. They came out, just like the chronological order said, and they fixed the fence. Here we are, 2017. Now, again, they're, they're, they're not sitting on the back porch watching your property. They're in their house, and when there's an issue, they call in ample time and notify them. Now, all of the sudden, the answer is, "It's a different tree, and we had no knowledge." Now, I don't understand how you can claim not to have knowledge.
Right.
Because what you're implying to me is, is we got to constantly call you. Now, ironically, I sent this letter to you, several other people, August 16th, with these same pictures. And they came out after she sent the letter saying that she can no longer speak to us, couldn't fix it, but they sent someone out and they did some more pruning. That same rotten tree that you just talked about them cutting down within, since last week, was in that picture. In fact, you identified it as being rotten. It was in the picture that we sent back in August. So, to me, are they waiting for another act of God so they can say it's a different tree, and we're not gonna fix it? When it was in the picture, we even said it, I circled it, "Here's some more rotten limbs, here's other trees right here." Nothing was done, but now, something is being done between a week, a week, from last week to this week. They come and they cut the very tree down, one of them that we said months ago was in the same picture. So, it's, it's like you're picking and choosing what you want to remember or what you want to fix. We said it's nominal damage. I've, I've lost more time off of work and energy just because of the principle. Now, to her point, someone did come back in the summer when they came to prune it after July, and they offered to fix the fence. Well, she had been in conversation with the city, and they had said no. So, she rightfully declined their offer because, one, it wasn't authorized by the city. And we know that if we allow some outside source to fix it, then now we own the problem again. So, that is why I told her to say no, because we hadn't received any authorization from the city. In fact, the gentleman said that he hadn't been authorized to fix it, but he would fix it. So, we said no, because it didn't make sense that we should do that. Now, since then, several times in the past week, they've come, they've cut down trees, they've been pruning away, and we thank them.
I've been finding them in my yard.
We thank them. However, when they, someone put the fence back up because they had to go out there to cut it. We don't know who it was.
Let me explain it, come on, please. I just need you to know that Mr. Billy Martin from Ely Tree Service, he was the man, the contractor that Terry Evans came out when I called. We talked to Ms. Sherry Evans. In turn, she sent Terry to investigate and identify this tree. He and I stood in the backyard, and we talked about that big oak tree. And he said, "That's where the limb come from." And I said, "You know, that's right, but the tree you saw, Mr. Hughley, right next to it, I thought, well, it could have come from that tree. Both of them was your trees." But he says, "That's where the limb come from." So, I said, "Okay, that's where the limb come from." So, he said, "I will send a contractor to take care of it." Because I told him that they had been out there with that big truck, and they had them put big tracks in my yard, and they had broke my driveway in 2015. He in turn told me, "If you would have called us, we would have come back and fixed that for you." But I told him, I said, "Listen, that drive wasn't as important as it was for you to fix my fence." So, I didn't call, because that was a little thing. But even though these trees was a little thing, but no one took it as little because they done blown it up, and it's a big thing now. Mr. Terry Evans sent Billy Martin out there, I do believe, to ask me to let him fix my fence free of charge to please me. I in turn told him, "You don't need to please me by fixing the fence. That's not bothering me that bad. But if you would go get an authorization from the city..."
That's right.
"...saying that they told you that you could fix my fence." I said, "I would accept that."
That's exactly right.
There was no rejection on him. And when he moved, when he asked about the debris, I need to tell you that too. The debris, he asked me, "Could he put it back there?" I said, "You know, this is the city property, I can't tell you what to do. But there's Bull Creek right there, and if you're gonna put it in that creek, you're gonna create another problem." So, he said, "I'll pull it back as far as I can." I said, "Well, when you get ready to leave, let me see." He left.
Yeah.
And, and, and yesterday, he just sent somebody back, yesterday, to put those limbs back. This is the tree that you saw, and this is, if I may show it to you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what the city master said.
He cut, they cut this tree down yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, and that's the old roof where it was. There was two right there.
I got you.
You got me? Okay, so, I didn't know I had prior knowledge of everything.
Mayor Protim, I agree, I agree.
You understand now?
Mayor Protim, let me just apologize to the tapes. And, and, and let me just say, I'll send my people back out.
Let me ask you this, when you send your people out, you ask them to ring my doorbell?
I will.
And, and let me know who they are.
I will.
You need to, because there have been people, there have been people coming in my yard and upsetting my sick husband.
No, we can't have that.
Yesterday, that happened.
No.
And he called me, he was so upset because somebody went in my yard, went in the fence.
I apologize, we don't enter upon private property without notification, we should not.
Well, how did anybody, after 2011, when I, when I called down there, 2011, how did, how?
I'm gonna fix all of that.
How did, how did the man come back? Why they didn't come back and check these trees after 2011?
I don't know, but I'm gonna fix it, Ms. Tate.
Okay.
I apologize, and we're gonna come fix it for you, okay? Now, and I want to make sure you're satisfied with your fence.
The fence is not fixed.
Okay, well...
It's, it's... They, they took it down yesterday to get the big tractor back there.
Oh, I see.
Okay, and so, when they, I'm thinking they was told to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I went right out there behind them, I got a smartphone, I took pictures.
You have a smartphone?
Yes, my granddaughter taught me how to use it.
Ms. Tate?
And I had, I took so many pictures.
What we needed to have done, because I know, I'm gonna just like to explain, the reason that Ms. Tate is upset is because of her husband has really been ill. And I, and I appreciate you, Mr., but I want to explain why she's upset. Her husband has been very, very ill.
Still is.
And, and still is. And, and he called me today upset because he didn't know who was in his backyard.
I love it.
And I said, "Don't you worry about it." I said, "Did they really?" He said, "No, no one told me anything. My wife is not here." And he is so sick, he can't even get out of the bed.
Yeah.
And so, that's why she is upset.
I see.
And she's also upset because when he was well, Mr. Tate used to walk the area here. They don't, they can't do it because the limbs are, are falling. And as you can see, they laboriously have contacted the city about this here. And I'm grateful to the city council for listening. Councilor Allen, appreciate you and everyone here, because right is right. And I'm not wracking you over the coals, it's just the fact that I, this is a senior citizen, two senior citizens. And I can't see how, not only the citizens, but I can't see how individuals who are not trained to be able to look at trees or limbs and be able to predict what limbs are going to fall off of a tree, whether it's in their back, and you see how close the trees were, so you know the limbs were hanging over, or on the front of individuals. How anyone can predict that, particularly when the city tells us, "Do not do anything to a tree." But the average citizen is not trained, as arborists is, to be able to do that. So, when something like that happens, and I'm just trying to wrap, and I appreciate that this issue's settled, I would just like to wrap my head around this issue and also have the viewing audience who have called me about this issue so that they will understand. Correct me if my understanding is cor, I mean, if I'm wrong. If there is a tree, and a city tree, and a limb from the city tree on someone's property falls on and damages a fence, a car, or something of that sort, and they call the city and they report that, is my understanding correct that the, what do you call it, the manager, the...
The arborist.
No, the...
Risk manager?
Risk manager office will say, "Well, we're sorry, but because you did not report that limb, or what it is, you have to pay for it." Is that, is that my, I just want to see if my understanding is correct.
If we have no knowledge of a threat to property where a tree limb is dead, and we receive a first notice because it's caused damage, we are not going to take ownership of it.
And what would you say, what's the first statement that you made? Have you received what?
If, on first...
If you had no notice?
That's right.
Or no knowledge?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, if the citizen has no knowledge that that is, is gonna happen, how, why should they be responsible? If the, we're talking about people who are able to look at something and see about it. My, my problem concerning this is, I think we need to do a relook on this here because how can we put the onus of responsibility on the citizens to be? You want to know something? I would not be able to look and see. If it's something, if this scenario happened with me, I would be upset. Because the first thing I would say was, "I didn't know it either, just like you didn't know it. I couldn't notify you because I don't have the expertise to be able to look and see that. Yet I have to pay for my vehicle that's damaged." So, that's my problem with this, and is this an ordinance of ours?
No, that's the law, and I'll ask the city attorney to respond to it, and he has case law that will...
That's fine.
Will, will tell you that if you have no knowledge, you can't be held responsible. I mean, it's no different than...
And if that case law change, you have to do an ordinance, right?
Well, you can't change that law locally, I mean, if you want...
Well, you can't change that law locally. I mean, if you want to be benevolent and just pay people for stuff like that, you can, but in a court of law.
Now, this, this is the law in the state of Georgia on this issue. If a landowner knew, or reasonably should've known, that the tree was diseased, decayed, or otherwise constituted a dangerous condition, the owner has a duty to remove the danger. A landowner is charged with knowledge of the dangerous condition of a tree if a layperson should've known the tree was diseased. So...
That's my problem.
And if it constitutes a dangerous threat.
That's the standard in Georgia.
We can't, everybody can't talk at the same time.
Read that first part.
Okay, this is the standard in, in Georgia.
Read the first part. If the what?
From the Georgia Court of Appeals.
If the...
If the landowner knew, or reasonably should've known that the tree was diseased...
Thank you, that's the, that's the catch word.
...decayed, or otherwise constituted a dangerous condition,
That's the catch.
The owner has a duty to remove the danger.
So, what I'm saying is that the average person is not an arborist, and that's the catch word right there. If the landlord, owner knew, a lot of people don't know. I would know. And I think that that is just, and if we need to go through, do the legislative agenda, we'll do it, because I don't think this is, in fact, I don't, I know it's not fair to the citizens to be held responsible when they don't know anything.
Well, I think that, if I'm wrong, Mr. Fay, would you please correct me? But I thought that the law was meaning, the landowner, meaning, in this case, the landowner would be the city.
Right.
You had the knowledge that the limb constituted a dangerous condition, because we've continuously called.
Exactly right.
And she pointed that out, that that was the fear, and, and, and she said she did that to ease our minds.
Exactly.
So, therefore, they had the knowledge.
Well, yeah, and let me just say, um, yeah, we have hundreds, thousands of trees on public right-of-way, on a hundred and forty-four thousand acres, two hundred and twenty square miles, in Muskogee County. And if we are not careful, as, as you ride down the street every day, I don't care where you go, there are trees on public property, and if limbs fall, if we, if we're not careful, we're gonna find ourselves in a veeroff.
What, what, what you're saying is, in essence, what you're...
I'm handling, I'm gonna, I apologize, and I...
This has been accepted already.
Yeah, I'm gonna come, I'm gonna, they are going to come and ring your doorbell.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
You have Mr. Corey Jones. He came out, and he was the one established a record of your trees was damaging my property, and he took full responsibility in 2011.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I wanna do my best not to have you come back down here.
Well, I don't wanna come back, and when I come back, it'll be different.
'Cause I, I...
Okay.
Ms. Tate, thank you so much.
The way this is gonna be handled.
You got a wonderful, beautiful mother.
The city manager.
And I know why you're...
Well, I like to hear from you.
On the straight mirror, you know?
I'm trying. Ms. Tate.
Yes, ma'am.
The city manager's gonna handle it. And if you don't like the way you handle it, you can call, call us there.
Call you.
Well, before we go, I would like to ask, going forward, I don't know what you mean when you say you're gonna handle it, but going forward, do y'all have knowledge now that if these limbs fall?
Well...
On our, on, on our, is, can we please be on record that you know now?
What I want you to do, I, I, and I know you're not arborist, and you can't see and tell, but there is absolutely no way that we can inspect limbs
Not even though, I got that.
That own live trees that are butts right-of-way, or backs up to city property all over this county. And so, if you see something...
I'm just talking about those ten in our yard.
If you see something, I want you to say something to us.
And we do.
Call us.
We do. But what is the expectation? I mean...
But the expectation...
We don't know it until it falls. That's, that's the issue.
Well, and...
Because we're not arborists either.
And there's probably no way for us to know, looking at it with the naked eye, if we can, if the arborist determines the tree is healthy, and, and a storm comes through and the limb falls, we...
But if the limb is hanging on our property...
Then you call us.
And it falls, that's a different story, whether it's healthy...
When you say hanging, a dead limb, hanging...
Dead or alive. I'm just saying.
Well, if it's a li, a li, you all have been to Savannah, and you ride down the streets, and the trees are all over the streets in Savannah, and in Oakland Park, uh, where trees are all over, hanging over the street in Oakland Park. There's no way, when we say, if a live tree and limb's hanging over a street, go through Oakland Park. It's all over the place. So, we can't go out and take down every tree, or Lake Bottom. So, I am going to come and handle your situation, and we, we can talk about proactive ways to look at and report, and we'll send people out every time to take a look.
Thank you.
But, Ms. Tate?
Yes.
We're coming to see you. We're gonna ring your doorbell.
Your doorbell, please.
I love that.
Yes.
He's coming to see you.
You really do need to call.
He said he could see you.
Yeah.
He's gonna come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Barnes.
My point is this here, and I stand on record, and I'm, and I'm gonna say this to our viewing audience. If you think that this, what the city manager just verbalized is unfair, these elected officials here, let them know, because it is, to me, it's unfair to punish the citizens for a city tree limb that falls and damages property, on their property, when it's, when the city insists on having a tree there, and insists that the citizens, citizens are not supposed to do anything. So, in the viewing audience, if you feel this, please call your elected council members here, and, because this is not fair to the citizens. I know what you're talking about, all the trees throughout the county and all, but you know, this, the tax, the citizens are the taxpayers that pay for everything. So, it seems like they're being punished for something that's not even in their ability to control. And I'll just let this matter rest for now, because it's not right. The whole act of God issue, to me, is not right. Okay.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying. But no matter how we feel, what we think should be done, if the case law, the state law says one thing, we can't supersede that.
There's been many unjust laws.
And we need to go through our legislature to change it.
There's been unjust laws. And I know you're old enough to realize many of them in your lifetime.
I understand that.
Okay.
And we still have to go through the legislature to get stuff changed.
And that's, that's what I'm saying.
Next, we have, um, Ms. Julia Sermon, Sarah's daughter, to fourth annual holiday fashion show and Taste of Christmas in Columbus. And the young people have been waiting patiently. Good evening, Mayor Protem, town, and council. I'm here on behalf of Sarah Daughters, a nonprofit women's ministry, and we're having a, our fourth annual fashion show and Taste of Christmas on Sep, ooh, they didn't hear so long calling it September, December sixteenth, at Christ Community Church at five o'clock PM. I have with me some of the participants. They would like to introduce themselves quickly, 'cause it's a school night. Come on, you're first. You're gonna go up there? Okay, just stand right there.
My name is Triana Shannon. I am seven years old. I will be participating in the fourth annual holiday fashion show. Please come out and support me. Thank you.
My name is Roderick Lewis, and I, I am eight years old, and I will be participating in the fourth annual holiday fashion show. Please come out and support me. Thank you.
I'm happy to be participating in the fashion show.
Let's give her a hand.
My name is Moses Mea Vertum, and I will participate in the fashion show. Come out and support me. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Natani Flake. I'm fifteen, and I'm delighted to be in Sarah Daughters' fourth annual fashion show. It's not only helping with my confidence, but also my self-esteem.
Thank you for this time.
Ms. Sarah, is there a phone number, ticket sales, or anything, please tell us about?
Um, I have some little flyers that I can, they can give all of you.
But so, the audience can see it in case someone's interested.
Okay, uh, the, the phone number is area code seven zero six four two six one three zero five. I do have some cards that I can give out as well. Thank you.
And if you have some flyers to leave with us, we can have it on our access channel. And we wish you all the best with the fashion show.
Mr. Gary Johnson.
Hey.
Hi, my name is Tara Rodoff. I am the Area 10 fundraising chair for Special Olympics. Area 10 stretches from Clay County to just north of Harris County. Um, my job and my responsibility is to raise funds through our community to support training, education, um, sportsmanship, and other things for the Special Olymping Program, Special Olympic programs in those counties. My final fundraiser for 2017 is going to be a girls' night out. We are here tonight to invite the community. It is a free event. Um, there are flyers posted. Um, you guys got the flyer last week. It is gonna be at the Clarion Inn between six and eight. The Clarion Inn is the old Holiday Inn Express on Manchester Expressway. They have generously donated us their, um, their azalea room. Um, it's next to the new Big Chick-fil-A. We've contracted with some local vendors to sell their items, um, here in the community. They're gonna come, and they're gonna set up tables. We've purchased food from Walmart, um, as well as we have some donated goods. Um, we have some items to raffle off, and again, it is free. Uh, we will be there between six and eight this Thursday, December seventh. Um, and again, as I said, it is my final fundraiser for 2017, and I would like to thank the Columbus community for the support that I have gotten from the city council, um, from various organizations throughout the community. Um, all of those funds, a hundred percent, go to our special needs programming. Um, all of us are volunteers, and, um, we just really would like the community to come out.
Thank you.
And this is Cecilia. Um, I am also the Muskogee Sports Swim Team Coach, and Cecilia is one of my swimmers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's your mother, Ruth Anthony.
Give us the time and place again.
Um, it is at the Clarion Inn at twenty-eight-hundred Manchester Expressway. Um, it will be between six and eight, and it is free.
When?
On December seventh, Thursday, December seventh, this coming Thursday.
Thank you. That is our public agenda. The city manager.
Mayor Protem, uh, first on my agenda, I've got Quantum Wireless Agreement, uh, asking approval to enter into this agreement, uh, with Quantum Wireless, uh, so that it will construct wireless boosting services in the Civic Center facility and retain the right to provide those services to various wireless providers for a term of ten years with two five-year renewals. Um, this service, Mayor and, uh, Mayor Protem and council, uh, will make cellular phone service more accessible for any Civic Center patron, uh, whose cellular network chooses to contract with Quantum Wireless for the cellular boosting service.
Motion.
Second.
Put a motion and a second to food item number one. That's the, okay, Quantum Wireless Agreement. Councilor Thomas.
Um, Mr. City Manager, is it, um, typical that we would do a, um, an agreement for ten years with another ten years, um, renewal? That seems like an awful long time to enter into this kind of an agreement.
Yeah, it's a ten-year with two five-year renewals. Um, Brian Giffen is here from the Civic Center, and, um, I don't know what the investment, uh, is, and why we would want to consider ten years on the initial agreement, but you wanna talk about that?
Uh, yes, I also have Representative Long's back.
Okay.
Hey, guys. Um, my name's Dan Harkness. I'm a president and CEO of Quantum Wireless. Uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you, uh, Mayor Protem and the esteemed council of, uh, Columbus, uh, for letting me talk here today. Um, so basically, the model, uh, the business model that we're proposing is typical, typical to a tower model. Uh, I don't know, uh, you know, how often you guys, I'm assuming you guys have probably run into, you know, ordinances or things in relation to, uh, towers. So, it's a very similar business model in terms of we, Quantum Wireless, are investing capital to build a, a commercial wireless solution for the, the, currently the four major carriers, uh, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Sprint, Verizon, um, that supports the, the, the usage of their devices for the current generation technologies, as well as ongoing generations going forward. Um, and so, what we do is, is we invest our capital, which for this project would be in the range of, uh, roughly a million dollars. Um, and so, the reason it's that long-term is in order to recoup the investment, um, and also because the carriers, similar to a tower model, if they were building a tower, uh, would require that term in order to commit their capital and their commitment, partner, partnership to the investment. Um, but, but instead of a tower, they're doing this in, inside of a, a building or a facility. And we've done similar contracts with these at the Macon Coliseum, as well as the, uh, the James Brown Arena in Augusta, Georgia.
And what is our, um, what is our cost?
Uh, zero dollars. No, you don't, no cost to you.
There's no investment in the infrastructure.
And you also get a, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you also, we, uh, as carriers join, we provide you a rent. They, they, we pay rent, and we pay a rent to you as carriers join. So, that's also in that agreement, uh, and that's guaranteed
Okay, ten, twenty years just seems like an awful long time to enter into this kind of an agreement, but...
No, it's ten years.
Well, it is, yeah, the initial term is ten years.
It's ten years with two five-year extensions, so that's twenty years.
But I'm saying with the option, or that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know what the con, I, I have to take a look at it. Um, I'm not certain.
See, that's what I, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking it's ten years with the option of us to say, agree or disagree for the next five or ten years.
Understood, understood, and I don't know that. I think it's, it's probably either an auto renewal, or some combination of an auto renewal and a mutual.
Okay, that was what I was trying to say, Councilor Thomas. Is it a straight twenty, or is it ten with a renewal? Like, we've done other contracts, we've done so many, and then...
The city attorney, Mayor Protem, has, has worked with them on this agreement, uh, no, Lucy Scheftall has. Can, can you tell us maybe a little bit about the terms?
Yes. Um, ten years with the two five-year renewals is very common for municipal tower leases, as they have said, and we actually have one like that on our South Commons today. Given the investment, it seems reasonable. Um, the ten-year term begins, but then there are automatic renewals for the next two, five- there are automatic renewals for the next two-five-year terms as long as all the conditions are being met and the rent is being paid and the facility is getting to benefit having the, um, service.
Okay.
Any more questions? Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, key up for voting. That passes.
Mayor Protem, next. Uh, thank you, sir, for coming, and thank you for your investment. Next, I've got the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Local Government Improvement Grant. We know it's LMIG, and, um, with Georgia Department of Transportation. We are looking at eight hundred thousand dollars for completion of the Forest Road Widening Project. Uh, and the remainder, one million, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, used for Fort Benning Road Roundabout.
We have a motion and a second, and this Forest Road Widening, is this the part that goes from Macon Road to Fort Road?
This, this is the Forest Road to Macon Road piece. Done. The one that's under, no, this is then from, uh, Woodrow Farm out to Shuttuck.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Key up for voting, please. That passes.
Mayor Protem, we've got requests to sub-lease Claflin School. You know, we've been dealing with, uh, this for a number of years now. We got the deed restriction lifted, um, and, uh, we had an investor to come and see you. Uh, us about developing the property, was going to apply for tax credits and so forth. And so we are asking tonight, um, to sub-lease Claflin School. Um, this, and, and so we're asking you to allow the Friends of Historic Claflin, Inc. to sub-lease, uh, Claflin School to the joint venture Claflin School Preservation LP in order to obtain state historic tax credits for the conversion of the school into a forty-four plus or minus units of affordable housing with an area of the school to be set aside for educational programs and to display the school's history. This is...
We have a motion. Counselor...
Just wanted to ask the question. You got a phone call today. There's no cost to the taxpayers on this particular project?
That's correct.
Okay.
No cost to the taxpayers. Uh, the developer was, was informed that in order to abstain state, uh, historic tax credits through the Department of Revenue, that the entity will, um, develop and own the project, uh, must be named holder on site control, and that's why we're asking for this. No. In fact, I saw they're here together, so there is no problem with it.
Counselor Woodson.
I'm just, again, I'm just trying to see how much we were leasing the property for.
Well, we're not, this has to do with the tax credits.
Will this go on the tax road, then?
Yes.
So they'll be paying taxes, but they will be paying for the property?
There's gonna be forty-four plus or minus units of affordable housing that we will benefit from, from a tax basis.
Okay. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, Ms. City Manager, I'm, I'm really glad that there's some progress being shown on this potential, uh, development. I, I would, uh, state, though, uh, personally, I would like to have seen an update or, uh, Department of Reinvestment to come in and just kinda give us a, a complete understanding of this. So, uh, in light of that, though, I've, I've made some calls, because when I first looked at it, the, the contract that's being presented is somewhat, in my opinion, complicated, because you have a leasing and a subleasing. Uh, I tried, uh, I, I wanna thank the city attorney and their department for walking me through some things. I had some questions. I think the main thing that my concern is, is this is, uh, that we have a, a above-board, this is city land. I mean, it's city land, city property, taxpayers' land, taxpayers' property, and that we have an above-board, transparent, and a development of integrity, and a solid, integral relationship with the developers that are there. And certainly, by no means, there should be outside of the subleasing, in this case, which is the developer, that, uh, the assurance of any type of profiteering on the taxpayers' land. So I've been assured by that. That was one of my concerns, because when you start looking at the contract, that question comes up. Uh, and it's a legitimate, uh, question. I, I, I still am a little confused as to how, how this deal is coming together and the, uh, the capital and the resources and all that's being put together. I, I, um, you know, it, it, it might be interesting, if financial institutions are involved, how they're gonna look at this, this contract. I don't know, but, um, I haven't really had a chance to review and to look at the contract in detail. I know there's a lot of stuff in there. I trust what I've heard, what has been communicated to me, but I hadn't had a chance to look at it. Uh, I think this body was, um, you know, we just went through a situation where we're somewhat held accountable for past decisions, and, and in this case, I, I, I see the same thing here. I just, you know, I'm having to take this more face value than what's been communicated to me. So in that, uh, you know, although I do support the project, because I have not read the contract in detail, I intend to abstain.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, if there are no further questions, I ask for approval.
The, I, the only question I have is, when the last time, what's the difference in now, and when we had this brought up before? When they had, the lease had been between the developer and the city?
Well, there's, all of the, uh, terms, um, of the current lease agreement remain the same. There's no difference, except they, in order to, to proceed forward with the state historic tax credits, it had to be, uh, as I said, in the name of the one who was gonna own the project. And that's why they're subleasing. But all of the terms are the same.
Say that again.
All of the terms of the current lease agreement will remain the same.
We got authorization to use this building for, other than just educational purposes?
The deed restriction was released.
Okay.
Um, through, um, and, and so basically, we could now do whatever we want to with the building.
Counselor Woodson.
Isaac, um, I support the project and everything. I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding one portion of it. Help me understand. This will allow the developer to go after grants to help him develop the site?
State historic tax credits, yeah.
Okay, to develop the site. In doing that, he benefits, does the city, because he's gonna make money from the property, the development, the housing, and all that. I understand that a small portion of it will come back to our budget. Would there be then a leasing of that land with them? Or all we're gonna get is just a portion of that rental money? That's the part I don't understand. I'm trying to understand, are we gonna make any money off of this deal to go into our budget, or we're just gonna be a partner in a project? Public-private partner?
They're taking the blighted property that was handed to us that we did not want. And we tried, we were prepared to give it back to the federal government. We gave it to Claflin, and they struggled with it for a couple of years. And then this developer came along and, with an idea. And that idea took getting the deed restriction removed. Uh, and, um, the developer is going to construct forty-four plus or minus affordable housing units where there will be property tax paid to the city. And, uh, it will remove the blight from that area. And, um, and, um, and, and the city benefit in that regard.
Okay. Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, um, the, does this mean that there are three entities dealing with Claflin School? That there is the Friends of Claflin, um, Claflin School Preservation, and then was it Oracle, um, the company that's actually gonna be building these, these units? Are there three entities there?
Well, there's, we leased the, the property to Claflin.
Right.
Claflin then partnered with Oracle, and I think they can come to the mic.
Okay, that's two.
And now, and we said in the original agreement that Claflin could not sub-lease the property.
Right, okay.
And so, and when Oracle, the group, applied for state historic tax credits, they said that basically, the developer, um, uh, who is, the, the entity that will be developing the property has to have ownership of the property. And so therefore, Claflin is, we are authorizing Claflin to sub-lease to this company, to Claflin School Preservation LP in order to make the deal work.
But the Claflin School Preservation LP will not own the property. We still own the property, right?
That's right, and we, we leased it to Claflin, they sub-leased it, because we typically will not allow someone we lease property to, to sub-lease it to someone else. And that's what we're doing in this case.
Now, Oracle, um, did apply for a, um, some federal monies, if I remember correctly, and, and have been awarded that. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
And let me just say, uh, Counselor, I'm asking him to come to the, uh, mic because I believe there's been a transfer that Oracle, are you still Oracle?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Protem, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to come clarify a few things. Uh, my name is Thompson Gooding. I work for the developer, Oracle Consulting Services. Uh, when we approached you earlier this year, March, April, another colleague of mine from our same company, uh, same developer, was here representing us. I was working on the project at that time as well. But he has since left the company, so you're stuck with me today. To answer your question, um, this new entity is a sole-purpose, uh, company set up only to exist as the joint venture between the Friends of Historic Claflin and Oracle. Um, it's really just a holding company that typically these deals are set up that each project is owned by its own entity. But that entity, again, is really just made up of the developer, Oracle, and the nonprofit Friends of Historic Claflin. So there is a third entity, yes, but it's the same two companies. It's just a legal structure.
And, okay, and if I understand it correctly, Friends of Claflin is the overall umbrella. And then under that umbrella, you have Oracle, who... No, you have the, um, Claflin School Preservation, who's subleasing from Friends of Claflin. And Oracle, then, what is their relationship?
Uh, let me back up just a minute. I hate to use the word umbrella. The city is leasing the property to Friends of Historic Claflin. Friends of Historic Claflin is leasing, subleasing
Subleasing, yeah.
to a joint venture of themselves and our company as the developer. So it's really only two organizations, even though there's three entities, if that makes sense.
Even though there's, okay.
Um, and to your other point, um, and, and forgive us, Councilman Davis, I, I believe you're correct, that we should have come up and given you a little bit more of an update. All of the, all of the commotion in April and May, or in March and April were to get ready for a deadline in May to apply for a significant amount of federal and state low-income housing tax credits.
Right.
Uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but in the neighborhood of, of six to eight million dollars. Uh, we have been awarded those funds, so this project really has some legs to it now. Uh, we have received approval from the state of Georgia Historic Preservation Division for the state historic tax credits, which are another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, say. Um, this measure that we're asking you to approve tonight is to do the final step with the Georgia Department of Revenue to actually claim those historic tax credits. And in order to do that, this special-purpose entity, Claflin School Preservation LP, has to have site control.
And the only reason...
And that, that has cleared up several of my questions, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and so the only reason that we're here tonight, we would not be here were, were, if, if we were not attempting to allow Claflin to sub-lease to this organization, because our contract with Claflin, Friends of Historic Claflin clearly says they cannot sub-lease. So that's why we're here.
Counselor Henderson, Henderson.
Well, just finally, and I just wanted to add an answer, a little piece of an answer to Counselor Woodson about what the, the community gets out of it. Certainly, it, it, it allows us to eliminate a blighted area, but it also preserves a, a major historic, um, uh, structure, and it does so while creating quality housing at lower than market rate. Because the nature of the tax credits is they'll have instant equity when they sell those tax credits, which then they are required to, to lease those properties at a seventy percent, seventy-five percent of market rate, something along those.
It's, uh, limited to no more than, rents which are affordable to households making no more than sixty percent of the area median income.
So it's, it, it's quality housing that's gonna be available to people that might not otherwise have access to it.
Correct.
And while we get the quality housing, I, you know, I don't want the, um, the fact that the preservation, as you said, of the school, um, and there will be an area set aside for educational programs and to display the school's history. We can't let that get lost in all of this, but, and we won't. Uh, and I know Richard Jesse and the Friends of Historic Claflin will not. Uh, but, but all those other things we talked about that comes out of this, uh, to remove that blight next to Lynnwood Cemetery, and where we are putting a new trail, spending two-point-six million dollars on a trail system from Tenth Avenue down to Fourteenth, is, is gonna bring that area up.
Well, the other thing that's neat about it is, I remember this almost didn't happen, because we got down to the eleventh hour, and we found that this council just decided, well, let's take a shot and see if you guys can get the financing. And Mr. Jesse and the folks at, uh, Friends of Claflin really had a, a circuitous route to get to where we are, and I applaud them for sticking, sticking to it. Uh, because this is not the, the end result, is not what the original project was designed to be. So I, I applaud their creativity and, and being able to identify a really great use for this, this structure.
Counselor Davis.
Sir, while you're here, I'm just gonna ask you a question. On your financing side, on the, uh, it, it, are, are you planning to take out debt through a normal, uh, banking lender? Or are you doing this a hundred percent equity from your investors?
Uh, we will have, uh, construction period debt, because a lot of the equity for the tax credits does not come in until completion. Uh, so we have a construction loan or a bridge loan during the, say, twelve to fourteen months of construction. Uh, we, long-term, um, typically, a project like this would have long-term permanent debt. Because this project is so small, at forty-four units, and with the income-restricted rents, uh, it really cannot support much long-term debt. So thankfully, we have the housing tax credits and the historic tax credits to make up the difference. Um, we may end up with some relatively small long-term debt. Uh, we'll have to see. We have the pleasure of the uncertainty of tax reform in Washington right now that's... We have the pleasure of the uncertainty of tax reform in Washington right now that's gonna have a material impact on a lot of this. So some of those things aren't totally defined yet. But if possible, we'd like to structure it without debt, simply because, you know, these deals, your housing authority does similar deals that are hundreds of units or more. At only forty-four units with the additional cost of historic renovation, everything just gets really tight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Key up the voting, please.
Did someone hit the wrong button? Okay.
Thank you all.
It passes.
Thank you. I've got a seventy-five-hundred-dollar ACC Civic Affairs Foundation grant for the Youth Advisory Council. There's no match required.
A motion and a second for the ACC grant. Any questions? Key up the voting. It passes.
Um, purchases. I've got lead-based paint, asbestos, and clearance testing services. It's an RFP with geotechnical environmental services, asking for your approval.
A motion and a second to approve A, lead-based paint under purchases. Key up the voting.
I have Martin Luther King Jr. Streetscapes.
Second. We have a motion and a second for MLK. Any questions? Key up the voting, please. It passes.
You've already approved C, and D is a contract amendment to add firefighter, cancer insurance, workers' compensation, excess coverage, and loss control.
We have a motion and a second to approve D, firefighters' insurance. Key up the voting, please.
No. Just something to add. Give me one.
It passes.
I've got a, an add-on. It's a GMA recertification City of Ethics Program. You initially approved this back in two thousand. We were designated in two thousand and one, and it's time for recertification.
I need a second. We have a motion and a second for recertification of City of Ethics Program. Key up the voting, please. Thinking for a minute, nobody can't about it.
Okay, and...
It passes.
And we've already heard from Ms. Tate from twenty-eight thirteen White Chapel Drive, and so that concludes my agenda.
Ms. City Manager, you're finished with your agenda, right?
I am.
Okay. I just wanted to, one thing, Counselor Garrett and I had the opportunity to participate yesterday in an event that our DOT representative, Sam Welborn, had out at National Infantry Museum. It was really great to have the DOT Commissioner here and his whole staff for the region and just the, the representation and talk that was there. On the way out to the Infantry Museum, I just went down South Lumpkin and just noticed that evidently all the trees that were planted there are gone now. I was just curious of what happened there from that standpoint. I'm sure they'll be replaced, but it just struck me kind of strange what happened from that standpoint. And you can put that on referral so you don't have to deal with it tonight.
I can tell you that, you know, of course, we got this thing called Westville, and they're relocated here.
Okay.
And they're moving some big things and...
I got you.
And, and we, and we agreed that we would allow them to remove, but they're going to be replaced.
Well, that makes sense. The, the, one of the conversations, I know our DOT representative, Mr. Welborn, is very, very concerned about the conditions of our roads in Columbus and almost any time you meet him, see him, or, you know, any time he talks to any of us, he's gonna talk to you about repaving, I promise you. And, you know, and, and likewise, I'm concerned the same in the same manner, as he makes a very valid point. You know, I don't know if the citizens, maybe we can do another update so the citizens can actually see how this works. But, you know, it does bring the question, are we, are, are we paving enough streets in a timely manner based on the resources that are available? I get, when I say resources available, I guess the people who actually do the paving, which, you know, I've always heard there may be some concerns there, maybe a weather issue, maybe some matter like that that might be hampering. I haven't seen any paving going on lately in a while. I do have some streets that I need checked out. And my council member actually lives in a subdivision where there's probably, what, four or five streets that are, I guarantee you, in the last two years, they moved, it's down the list, right? Because the lower the number is, is priority, right?
Right.
And certainly, there's a couple others that I don't mind to call in, but they do need to be looked at. But my concern is that if we're not routinely paving, and I think everybody understands that we're not routinely paving, the streets up here continue to get worse, and then you just have a logjam that's gonna get reevaluated and put down at the, at the priority list. And then you're just gonna have masses, and it's gonna be a logjam, basically, is what it's gonna be. So I am concerned about that. I hope the mayor will attempt to address that in her upcoming budget. I think we have maybe resources to do that, you know, but it really needs to be looked at. There's, there's a lot of money that can be used for paving.
Well, not really.
It's just a matter of if it's, if it's put in the right place.
Well, not really.
Well, you know, we...
Can you just, can you just bring that back to us in a work session?
I, I can.
Because we've had, we've had...
So...
Reports given to us, listing the streets that we want to be paved, how much money we had. And John also talked at one time about the tenant, and it did have something to do with the weather. So if you will have in a work session, bring the streets back, that's on the list, and they're rated.
I, I have definitely City Manager Hodge come back with an update. And, but I'll just tell you so that there's no confusion out there for those watching. You know, back when we had money, when we had special-purpose local option sales tax, and at some point at peak, we were able to do, we did for a year or two, fifty miles of resurfacing in a year. And our target had been twenty-five miles in a year, but based on funding, I think we're down to about fifteen miles a year. And it's based on funding. We just don't have it.
Right.
But we will bring back an update for you.
Well, thank you. And if you'll do me a favor, Ms. City Manager, when, when you see our DOT representative, Mr. Welborn, will you make sure you let him know that Counselor Davis did come and, and reflect his comments at the council meeting, that he, he spoke up on behalf, because he asked me to come back and share that tonight.
Okay.
And I'm just keeping my word to our DOT rep, because he's been so good to us.
Oh, he has, absolutely. I, I can't thank Sam Welborn enough because he's been good to Columbus, good for Columbus. And, you know, I, I hate that I couldn't make the luncheon. I was at another engagement out of town, but Sam Welborn is a Georgia DOT Representative Board Member we want to have because he, he gets, he gets it done. So wherever you are, Sam, thank you.
We watch. Counselor Woodson.
Um, City Manager, I wanted to go back on, on the South Lumpkin Road. Now that they removed the trees so that they can make areas, and they're gonna replace it, have we come up with some type of beautification? You know, I've been asking you for about three years now. What are we gonna do to beautify that road since all the development is coming?
Well, we, we have put it on the list, right? It's on, and it's on the list for streetscapes beautification. I can't tell you when, but it, but it's on the list, and we're going to be working toward making that happen.
Well, I'd just like to know if it's gonna be in my lifetime. And with the other beautifications, with the moving of the trees and all the other development coming, and I know our, our employees are very, um, studious.
Yeah.
They can work something out with some little negotiations where we can get a little extra funding to do that strip.
When we come back to give the update, I'm gonna see if we can't...
Give me an update?
Yeah.
Okay.
At that time, as part of, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, man. Thank you. You know, I'm gonna put on my calendar to start nagging you, right?
I know, I know you will.
Because time is kind of going, and the year goes by real fast, and, and that road needs some assistance.
But trust me, staff know that that's, uh, been requested, demanded, and so forth, because they remind me of it. So we know, we, we're trying to get it in there.
Well, I thank you, staff, but I'm gonna nag him some more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Clerk.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Protem, and Counsel, on the clerk's agenda, we have three items of information. We received correspondence from the City of Stockbridge. They are asking for a resolution in support of Georgia Municipal Association's legislation policy regarding de- annexation legislation to create new municipalities. Got a biographical sketch of Mr. James Lewis. This is Uptown Passat Board recommendation for the unexpired term of Ms. J.C. Jenkins, who has resigned. We've received correspondence from the Medical Center Hospital Authority submitting recommendations for the, a position held by Dr. Michael Gorm, and I will get to that later down on my agenda. And also, can I get a motion to receive the resignation of Ms. Jenkins from the Uptown Passat Board?
Motion and a second. But we received regrets. Is that on the key then also?
No, I think so.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
No, we don't.
All those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes.
And then also have another letter resignation from Mr. Dale Caldwell, resigning from the Community Development Advisory.
We have a motion and a second, that letter be received, resignation be received with regrets. All those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes. If motion and a second minutes be received, all those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes.
On our Animal Control Advisory Board, we had a conversation with our Animal Control Division on last week. They are trying to make contact with the association president to get that recommendation for our Animal Control Advisory Board. Ms. Livy Smith has been renominated for the Board of Historic and Articulate.
Give you a second. We have a motion and a second confirmation of Ms. Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Inopposes.
And we are still waiting to hear back from, uh...
Counselor Thomas.
Um, I just wanted to ask about the Judith Nale seat. Does, is this a position that is recommended to us by the...
The Cultural Center.
Liberty Cultural Center, or...
Yes, it is. And I tried to, I've been trying to make contact with Ms. Anderson. I did get a chance to leave her a message, haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay, thank you.
And then on our Board of Tax Assessors, Mr. Matt Morfield has been renominated for a second term. Also, Mr. Todd Hammond, Counselor Allen.
Mr. Hammond.
Counselor Baker.
Mr. Morfield.
Counselor Barnes.
Hammond.
Counselor Davis.
Hammond.
Counselor Garrett.
Garrett.
Counselor Henderson.
More than a second.
Counselor Huff.
Hammond.
Counselor Thomas.
Thomas.
Mayor Protem.
Morfield.
Counselor Woodson.
Hammond.
Mr. Morfield has been elected. Can I have a motion for confirmation?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hammond, I apologize. Can I have a motion to confirm, Mr. Hammond?
Move for confirmation.
We have a motion and a second for the nomination of Mr.?
Todd Hammond, I apologize.
Todd Hammond. All those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes.
And also, Mr. Lawton Grantham has resigned. We'll need a nominee for that seat.
Ms. Watson, Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Do you happen to recall when this, this, um, if, when we, when we appoint somebody to this, this will be to fill out Mr. Grantham's seat, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
When we appoint someone for this seat, it's to fill out his term. Do you happen to recall when his term is up?
Uh, I do not. I can, I'll check, and then I can send you an email to let you know.
That'd be great, thank you.
Jane Govar.
Who?
Jane Govar.
Jane, what's that last name?
Govar.
Govar?
Mm-hmm. G-O-V-A-R.
Okay. We'll bring this back at our, our next meeting. On the Building Authority, we still need someone from Mr. Kell Jackson, who has resigned. Civic Center Advisory Board, Counselor Barnes, you still working?
I have something, I am working on it.
Okay. On our Circle Commission, these three seats, Ms. Sarah Anacella, Mr. Danny Archandaya, and Mr. Paul Hernandez, we'll need someone for these seat. For the Comprehensive Plan Stakeholders Committee, City Manager is nominating Ms. Betsy Covington.
I have a motion and a second confirmation, Ms. Covington, for the City Manager. All those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes.
And on our Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, Ms. Vanessa Lewis has been renominated. She can be confirmed.
Motion and a second.
All those in favor, that motion say aye.
And on our Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we are working with the commission to try to get someone for these seat. Ms. Paloski and Mr. Murphy. On the Personnel Review Board, Mr. John Rose's term will be expiring the end of this month. He is eligible and would like to serve again.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bring this back at our next meeting for confirmation. The mayor is working on a replacement for Ms. Janice Granville for the Public Safety Advisory. We are working with the school district for their replacement for Mr. Jeff Battles. Counselor Davis is working on a replacement for Mr. O. Bruce. And Counselor Henderson is working for, uh, replacement for Ms. Pate. On the Medical Center Hospital Authority for Dr. Michael Gorm's seat tonight, Counselor Thomas is making the recommendations of Mr. Murray Solomon, Mr. Tracy Sears, and Dr. Michael Gorm. Can I get a motion to submit these to the authority?
Motion and a second to submit three names to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. All those in favor, that motion say aye. Inopposes.
And on our Tree Board, Dr. Roger Brown, as well as Ms. Ann Wright's seat, has been declared vacant. These are councils appointment, we'll need a nominee for each of these seats. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor Protem.
Okay. On the Tax Assessors, the gentleman that was, um, Mr. Morfield, how long has he served?
Uh, this will be the end of his first term. He only served one term.
So he's eligible.
Well, he had to be off the board for at least twelve months.
Oh, okay. Got you. And the Senator Turner said we need to have an executive session on...
Real estate acquisition and litigation.
Let's go to executive session. That's motion and second, that we go into executive session, deal with real estate. Litigation. All those in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
Inopposes. Thank you. We go to the executive session. Okay, we just, we just come out of the executive session, no votes were taken.
We move adjourned?
It's a proper motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposes.
Good night, see you next Tuesday.